Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, this is the Walpole Zone and Borders of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. With us this evening is Town Economic Development Officer John Chaverno, Board Member Drew Delaney, Board Member Rick Merrick, Jane Coffey, Suzanne Murphy. I'm John Lee. Bob Fitzgerald. Our Administrative Secretary is Amy Messier and George Pucci from Town Council with Copeland and Page. So, the first thing we're going to do is we have a continued case, case number 0319, 27 John Turco Drive. This is an in-law apartment. The applicant has revised the plans. They've been at Town Hall and he complied with everything that the zoning board was suggesting and I think he's got a good plan to go at this point. John, did you review it?
I haven't seen the revised plans.
Okay. Let's see. Do you know when you dropped off the revised plan?
I think it was last weekend. Was it last Tuesday or Wednesday?
It was the day that I went home.
March. Okay, they've been there since March 26th, so we've had time to review them.
And I'm going to step down?
Okay.
Yep.
I reviewed them. I don't think there's any issues.
Just to let you know, as your request, I did check with fire department. They have no concerns as long as there was two egresses that satisfied their requirements.
Yeah, John, I would say you just showed me the changes you made and if the ZVA satisfied and you feel he meets the criteria for it, then it's been nothing else.
Yeah, I think that it continues to look like a single-family home and it's, you know.
Parking shown.
Parking shown, existing is shown and also there is a hardship based on the position of the chimney, but he's come around that. So, I think that it looks good, fits the character of the neighborhood. So, that being said, do you want to close the hearing for this evening? Please. Okay. Applicant requests closing the hearing. Could I have a motion to, this is just to close the hearing, motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne, seconded by Jane. All those in favor of closing the hearings say aye. Aye opposed abstained and so carried. Okay. Next, we have two. Hold on, now we've got a vote on it. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the plans for 27 John Turco Drive with a revised set of plans dated April 3rd, 2019, which were, shows plot plan. And with drawings.
I think that might be a photograph. There's digitally signed by the P E on January 22nd, 2019.
And the revised plans submitted to the board on March 26th, 2019. And that, that shows the egresses and everything. So, and any standard conditions. So, could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Jane. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Suzanne. Any further discussion on 27 John Turco Drive? Okay. All those in favor in voting on this will be Drew, Jane, Suzanne, Bob and me. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed abstained. Okay, so carried. So, very good. You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who, just so we can make sure we serve the residents best, who, just if you can show of hands, who's here for Burns Ave, 40B? Okay, we'll be taking that first. This is a continued case and what we've done since the last meeting, we've got an opinion from Town Council. Town Council is here this evening and what we're going to do is talk a little bit tonight about traffic from the, is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to talk a little bit about traffic, site engineering and we're going to talk about the issue of access to the property. We do have another hearing right after this for Benchmark, which is New Pond Village, so we're going to be aware of time for everybody on this. Okay. So, that being said, since we last met, the zoning board had a public site walk at the property and that was conducted yesterday morning and it was a public, public meeting, so we did have a neighbor there who participated. No real evidence was taken. It was to familiarize the zoning board with the site, so we understood what's being presented and what's being talked about. So, if you want, we can start with the applicant. Would you want to start with site engineering or traffic or what's?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have, and tonight, Rob Truax from GLM Engineering. He's here to discuss the site design and utilities on the site. And we have Bill Scully from Green International, who will discuss traffic impacts. And I have Dean Harrison as 40B consultant. So, once ready, we'll have Rob go through his.
And before you get started, one thing, the zoning board has applied to Mass Housing for a consultant that will work for the zoning board. We had done that before the last meeting and as of today, we have not heard anything from them.
I've tried calling them, but I'm still waiting to get in touch with them on where that request stands.
Okay. So, we'd hate to have lack of action continue on mass housing support. Okay. Where's that for? Sorry. Technical assistance. Zoning boards can request technical assistance from Mass Housing for 40B developments because they recognize a lot of towns are not familiar with this and they grant the town money for a technical assistant that assists the zoning board.
For the record, I'm Rob Truax of GLM Engineering Consultants. We're the site engineers and surveyors for the project. I think everybody's familiar with Locust. We had a site walk the other day. They go know where we are on this site. It's off the end of Burns Ave. It's an existing site with a single-family residence that's run down. There's a lot of debris on the property, as we all witnessed on the site walk. It has frontage along Burns Ave at the very end of the road. It also has a small piece of frontage on Union Street, which you can see traverses through the property out to Union Street. The proposal is to build seven buildings with 36 condominium-style, Town Hall-style units. The roadway will extend off of Burns Ave approximately 350 feet into the site cul-de-sac turnaround. The cul-de-sac turnaround has been designed to meet the standards of the subdivision control law for turnarounds, diameter, et cetera. The roadway width coming in, Rose Project, is a 24-foot wide road. As you can see on the board, all the longings front along the proposed access drive. Portion of Burns Ave, which is highlighted a little darker here, as you can see on the site, is the portion that would be improved as far as widening, paving, et cetera. At this point in time, that area is just gravel. There's no paving within that area. Those of us that were on the site walk, I think we pointed out on the site where the public way ended and private road took over, that's basically right after the last drive went on the right here and there's a big rock and that area is going to, is proposed to be improved with 24 feet of pavement and get rid of the gravel. As far as the site utilities go, we did go before the water sewer board. We did get an approval, got a vote last week, last Monday night, for the hookup for the water sewer. We are showing the sewer going from the project site down through the right-of-way area towards Union Street, which tying into sewer on Union Street. The water line route is what we're proposing with connected union, come through the site, go up Burns Ave and tie into, I guess they just recently, we show it as a six-inch line, but they just recently upgraded that to an eight-inch line in Burns Ave. So, we would be connecting that with our water, which will also be an eight-inch line. Just to further that a little bit, on this plan, which we haven't revised, we show 10 feet of separation for the water sewer as a heads up towards Union Street, which is down in the area where the existing perennial stream is. We're very close to that with the utilities. We did get permission from the water sewer to allow this separation of about five feet and we were going to encase the water line with a double encasement and so that would allow the water line to be shifted over five feet, just in that small area where it's close to the perennial stream to give us a little more protection from that stream. As far as the drainage goes on the site, that exists today, it's relatively flat with a gentle slope towards the wetlands, which are towards the rear of the property. There's also a sloping in a wooded area that traverses down towards the existing stream. The proposed drainage system, as it's designed, does not discharge any water towards the perennial stream on the other side of the property. Everything is captured through the runoff from the street, which is via catch basins and manholes. And these catch basins actually do install at the end of Burns Ave to pick up the water from Burns Ave, which apparently doesn't have any drainage in that area. It just traverses off the end of the road into the wetlands. We're proposing a drainage basin on the back of the units, which is adjacent to the wetland area. That basin is designed to meet and handle up to, including the hundred-year storm event for the whole site. The roof runoff from the buildings is captured, a separate drainage system brought into an underground recharge system, which is behind the units, in between the basin and the units itself. That overflows into the basin, which would then be mitigated, we had as well, and discharged from the wetlands. The project is before the Conservation Commission. We have not had our first hearing. That's next week for order commissions. As you can see on this plan, I just want to highlight some of the buffering. There is a plan to do plantings on the residential side here, over by the Brook Lane residence. And this is, if you look on your plan set, you'd see it in supplemental sheet, see there's a planting plan and you'll see that buffering in there. And that's basically white pines and evergreens planted along that property line. In addition to that, for the Conservation Commission, which I don't highlight the plantings here, but the 25-foot buffer, if you were on the site walk, you would have noticed that there was a lot of debris and rock and whatnot. So, we've agreed on the last application, and the plans still indicate this, that would all be cleaned out and then there's a planting plan to reestablish the 25-foot old disturbed buffer. That was done by Eco Tech. He came up with a planting plan for that 25-foot buffer. I don't think in that plan set, we show the actual location of all those plants, but it describes that they're going to be planted in that area. I think with that, that's kind of a summary. On that also, on that sheet, you'll see along the Mr. Conroy property on Burns Ave, there is a proposed fence and/or buffering of trees that will be put in and I think it would have left the heat or the fence, both trees, or even both, for buffering of that neighbor as well. And that's all on that supplemental sheet, see in the plan set. I think it's the last sheet. So, with that, any questions or can I answer?
I have a question, Rob. The buildings on the left side of the road, do those also go into the infiltration field?
They do. They do. The roof runoff, you can see this red line.
Yep.
So, it's captured. It's only capturing the front on these two, but it's capturing the back as well as the front on the first one, just because of the elevation drop behind the buildings.
So, proposed building one, proposed building two and proposed building three, the backside, where does that drain to?
Well, building one gets captured in the drainage system, so that gets piped around to the front.
Yeah.
Building two and three, they discharge on the ground in this grass swale area, which will eventually flow down into the wood. Eventually.
Anything else on the engineering?
Just an overview, Sean.
So, the sewer connection to the Union Street, is that all gravity-fed or would it be a compensation?
That's all gravity-fed, yes.
And you mentioned designing the stormwater infiltration system for the 100-year storm. And I'm not an expert in this, but I understand that, you know, given the intensity of storms increasing over time, that standard is being reevaluated since we've had some pretty heavy-duty storms. So, I'm just curious.
This is designed on seven inches of rain for a 24-hour period.
Okay. And that's the current, that's the current standard?
The recharge system behind the buildings, this here, this came into play when, because of the wetlands and the discharge, the trap hole broke eventually, everything kind of gets there at some point in time. So, that was put in to get the roof runoff into the ground early and cool it down, privy it on into the drainage basin. That's what that was for. So, off where all the roof runoff is getting grabbed and put into that and not go directly in because, you know, the roofs are hot and the water hits it. So, that was the plan for that.
And then with regard, I don't know if you're the right person to talk to about this, but can you walk us through sort of construction and sequencing and the sort of construction management process? Or if that's somebody else, we, I think I would love to.
Okay.
Sequence it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to raise an issue. This old hat, with regard to the hazardous materials there. I did walk through it and as you know, and the rest of the board knows, they're all oil drums and tires and a lot of, and as I walked along, I tried to look at what was underfoot. And this black asphalt and some kind of yellow something or that I don't know what it was and a lot of gray gravel. Now, I know that last year, that you did a test at the beginning and at the end, so to speak of the project. And in, correct me if I'm wrong, and at the beginning of the project, a hole was dug and it wasn't clean all the way around. So, they had to dig around until they got clean, much as if you were trying to take out a cancer and you had to go all the way around. And the same, I don't know what they found at the other end, but as you know, I did raise the issue that what about the whole other area there? I mean, that's a big area. And Mr. Petrosi had said that had all been tested and that the company that in fact decided these are the only two places that really they needed to pursue it. I frankly would like to see that done again. I'd like to see it done with some supervision from the town as well. And I don't mean this in any slanderous or any accusatory manner, but I do, I am aware of the fact that there are times when a person of the town is present, when various tests are done. So, I really feel as though I'd like to see that repeated. I really would. Because I don't really think, the last time around, I want to say this is a whole thing, in the beginning, when the ground was first tested, we did get some sort of a, as I recall, somewhat vague, am I right? Sort of a vague, it was okay.
It was good.
It was good. And yet, I think it was Suzanne that raised the issue, how deep did they go? And that's how we got into doing these two. But I still feel very strongly that this is an area that burdensome, used to dump everywhere. And I think that, I think I just feel more comfortable for the people that are going to buy these homes, which by the way, I think are beautiful and planned, I have to say that, for their sake, as well as the neighbors around there, given the fact it is so close to the wetlands and East Walpole is low, period. I don't think it's anybody there that hasn't got some kind of a drainage problem. I'd really like to see that done again in many more areas as opposed to just the beginning and the end.
Well, I don't think that's an accurate reflection of the testing that was done on the property. I think if you look at the soil, I mean, the report that was provided, it's over 518 pages. The details, all of the testing that was done on the property, it's more than just one, on each end of the property, it's probably over two dozen test pits in a 300-foot stretch. I think it, we overly tested the property as it is right now, so.
Well, I think you, you know, I just want to finish this. I'm not, I appreciate what you're saying, but I have to tell you, as a layperson, to read through 500 pages of this sentiment and that sentiment, I would like to see something that I could read as an average intelligent person would say, this, 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 this. Volumes does not necessarily mean that I would understand it.
The, I think there's a pretty good 20-page summary at the beginning of the report that answers all the questions that you're raising. I think we've done a pretty good job of testing on the property.
When were they done?
Excuse me?
Are these from last year or current?
These were the last two years, so I'd have to go back.
Anything current, I mean, as of?
There's nothing new to go out there and do anything current at this point. Nothing has changed, nothing has changed on the property since we did the testing.
Except we had a lot more wet.
Well, do you have your environmental person here this evening?
No.
Okay. So, I think that's one of the things that, you know, we just got the report this week and I agree, after walking the site, it raised questions as far as what's out there and we really need to look at protecting the neighbors and future people that would live in these proposed houses, to make sure that they're not sitting on something that is not, we want to make sure that it's safe for everybody. So, and we can look at having, you know, a better explanation of the environmental report at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the discussion of, but I think we should be specific, saying we want, you know, to know specifically what's out there and how it should, you know, how that can be done.
So, we still have nothing witnessed by the town?
No.
Yeah, it's, yes, they did it independently.
Right.
The only testing that was this is by the town, the testing we did for the drainage system.
Right, which would be a per test.
That's all that was witnessed by the town?
All of the stuff that we personally did. I don't know if they were out there for the others.
The per test, right?
Yeah, for the drainage.
Yeah, correct. Okay. Okay. One of the things, do we have any additional submit, did you submit any additional information? We've got the set of plans from last time. We've got the 500-page environmental report from the previous proposed project from, what, a year ago or so? Two years ago.
We haven't submitted any additional information.
Okay. I just want, because at the last meeting, one of the things that we talked about was a list of the waivers that you're requesting.
It's in the original application.
Okay, in the application by?
It's in one of the sections there.
Okay. Because I have that right in front of me. Okay, wave, I have it here, waivers, the specific waivers, section four. Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions on?
I just had one more question. The buffer zone along the, yeah, how wide is, no, the one way you're going to plant, how wide is that?
It's a double roll sagar tree, so probably 10' to 12'.
All right. On that, no, that area is all woods.
This is one of the areas that, is degraded, they got to clean out.
Oh, so you're tearing down the woods in there?
Yeah, some of that's all been cleaned out. I think we saw that the tree, the tree life out there wasn't very good.
That's because it's so wet.
But I'm also expecting that, you're going to be, Ma, this is going to be three feet higher in some section.
Yeah, I'm, so the roadway coming in, it's obviously a grade out here, but then it rises up. In the cul-de-sac, it's probably about three feet higher than the ground we saw out there. But the idea is that these buildings, foundations go in, and this whole area between gets built up about three feet. The backs of the buildings, however, will not have full foundations, so you won't be building that up to the top of the foundation, only the fronts on both sides as you come into the site. So, if you can envision that, you'll know the buildings will be up, the fronts will be even, and the backs will all drop down. So, this area around here, there's not a lot of filling going on, but there will be disturbance because there is, there is a plan, I think, given the conservation, but there's been some degradation of the riverfront area that we got to clean up and replant. And this is part of that plan.
You said the building number two and building number three, the backside of the houses, the water won't be captured, it will dissipate?
On the ground.
On the ground? Can you show me where the flood plain is to the property?
It's way down here by the river. So, this is the river.
Right.
So, the flood plain chases it like this. It's this red line.
Okay. So, to the north, northeast of building two and three?
This way, yeah. So, it's, this is 100 foot.
Yeah.
So, from the rivers, this is 100 foot, paring, this is 200 feet.
Okay.
So, you can see, and this is all wooded and then it goes, this is kind of grass areas, their backyard, basically, it will cross over from across the river.
And there's no information about the elevation, the three feet that they're proposing to raise and what it could potentially do to affect the flood plain?
So, this flood plain is down at elevation 106, 107. This portion of the site's up at 114. So, this, this whole area of the site is above the flood plain by 6 to 8 feet, existing.
Right.
That's not immediate, so it's well above the flood plain. The flood plain doesn't come up this hill at all. It follows the river. So, as you can see, just to give you an explanation of how the flood plain works, the river is obviously flowing downhill, down gradient through the site to Union Street. So, the flood plain changes as it goes up the river because you're going up the elevation. So, at the street, it's 106. When you come to the back of Barrows House, it's 107. When you get up to the next home, it's at 108. And that chases it all the way up to the river.
Is it feasible to connect those two buildings to the drainage system so that the?
The backs?
Yeah.
It's not impossible. Yeah, it's not impossible. It could be done.
Rob, are you familiar with the architecture of the building? Because essentially, what they have is a garage under. So, the fronts of the garage, if you drop down in the back, you'll be below the garage. There's no basement below.
There's no basement? There's no first floor of the garage?
Well, the plans show the first floor, the bottom floor, at street grade, is the garage.
So, the question is, what's under the garage? Is it basement or is it?
Yeah.
Is that the only page?
No.
I'm looking for that.
Essentially, in the back, it's going to look like a three-story building plus a half, if it drops down a half.
That's correct.
It'd be like three and a half stories.
We're considering a garage and a half-story below is right now, I guess that, and two stories above that, two and a half stories above that.
Yeah, but.
So, what's underneath the garage? Is there a cellar?
No, it's a slab.
A slab.
So, yeah, so the backs would have to be the same elevation as the front.
Well, they'll have foundations showing, what we have, they're not going to have four feet of foundation showing.
Okay, in the back, so that would be.
Correct.
Okay.
Do I have the traffic consultant going next?
No, I've got questions about what I just heard.
Go ahead.
Do we, in the set of plans, do we have the elevations?
It's in the book.
It's in the book.
In the book, it's a section.
I got it.
You got it, seven.
Okay, so, look at these and they all have garages and we already, you already said the garages are going to be obviously street-level. And we already, you already said the garages are going to be obviously street level, and then it drops off to the back.
About four feet or five feet.
So as we look at this, these garages that are shown, to the left is a doorway entrance. What's underneath the doorway?
What do you mean, I can't see that.
Well, I mean, is it a, is it a basement?
No, he's saying it's a slab.
No, you walk in at the garage.
That's the garage level.
You walk in the door to the left of the garage, John.
And then you go up, up a flight of stairs to the first floor.
Okay, so there is, there is no, there is no basement.
The garage, I guess, is a basement, there's no walkout basements.
No.
Okay, because I thought I heard you say that there was a basement.
There's a basement, yeah.
My bad.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask you, I mean, in a lot of these cases, the formal, the final architectural plans will have to be, you know, formalized once we get the approvals, but the way typical townhouses designed, in our, my estimation is, yeah, but you enter in, your foundation is at a certain height, you come in off the existing grade, you go up the stairs, two or three steps to the first floor. Same thing with the garage, you come in the garage, the garage isn't at the same level as the first floor, it's, you have to, you have to walk up two or three steps to get into your first floor. So the change in elevation between the site and the street, the back of the houses, rather than fill all around the units, those, the backs of those houses will be open in terms of a walkout, what we call a walkout basement. As Robert said, you'd have approximately four feet of concrete showing with a four-foot, we call it a knee wall, that would have windows and would be open to the, to the rear yard. So it's the change in elevation between four feet and four feet that gives you the basement, I call it the basement. Then you have your first floor, second floor, and attic.
Okay, so the reason why this becomes important to the zoning board, and what I'm not, I'm still not getting a clear answer. What, the reason why it matters is because we're talking about how much material is going to be dug out and moved on the site. We're talking about concerns about wetlands and flooding in this area. So if this was just a, a flat piece of land, someplace where we weren't looking at elevations in water and, and what's been dumped in the area in the past, I don't understand what you're saying, but it does matter because what your proposed, what we heard before was that there's basements, it's gonna go in, it's gonna be higher, you know. How do we know exactly what's going to be built if it's not clear in the plans?
Well, essentially, if you look at the elevations that Rob has on the engineering plan, the basement floor is essentially on the existing grade. So we won't be, we, we won't be excavating into the ground, as you say, and affecting the groundwater or anything of that sort. If anything, we'll be taking that material out and reprocessing it on-site, as I mentioned yesterday, it will be considered fill on the site. So there is a, there isn't a likelihood that we would be affecting groundwater or flooding or, or any of that sort that you're talking about on the site.
And just so everybody's clear, for neighbors and people watching on TV, these, there's no living areas on the, on the ground floor. It's a garage, front-to-back garage, that's what we're looking at, the, how it's been proposed. And even the, the plan that they show is probably the opposite, because it shows a slight incline from the roadway going into the units, where we already heard that in the real plan, the roadway is elevated and it goes down to the, to the units. Is that correct?
Not in the real plan, no. It's not drawn that way.
How, so the roadway, what elevation is the roadway at?
Like, that's probably only like six inches to a foot difference going up towards the garage from the road. The driveways sloped to the road, they have.
The driveways, right, so you don't get water into the units. Okay, so.
In other words, do I understand that the garage serves as a quote-unquote basement? That the remainder of the house is not, does not have a basement?
Correct, just from what you're telling us right now, from what they've planned, so, which I'm not familiar with that, but.
The only thing I'm familiar with that I could compare this to, and that would be, you know where Rose Court is, or whatever the name, Albany, Hollingsworth and Bost and East Walthall, that development then went in there, their townhouses, and I realize this is another, but I've been in those. The garage goes in just so far, you walk, here is the entryway. You walk in, and you can come out, you can come from the garage, but you can also go down the basement, and under all of that house is a basement.
Under the garage?
No, no, not under the garage, under the house.
Oh, and.
The garage only goes past.
The garage only goes far away, so that, yes, you could go down, and that's an area that, so that helps with the drainage, but also with storage. It's, I'm not quite clear on.
This is, this is actually more like Rockwoods Project on East Street.
See, I haven't been here.
With the, the one that's kind of down. The garages are at fagile level, and then everything else is above it.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to clarify at the next meeting, the, you know, these are prospective buildings that we would customize to fit the site.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to get it in my mind, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, as we move, as we move along, are there any neighbors that have questions that pertain to the engineering of the site? Or anybody from the public, questions on that engineering? Good evening, Mr. Conrad.
The engineering, so talking about roads and stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, and we have the, we have the engineer with us this evening, so that's why.
Okay.
Nice to see you going first. You want me here, John?
What's that?
You want me, you want us up first, so you get rid of me?
Why would you say that, Jim?
Why would I say?
I was gonna ask you for a ride.
I do appreciate it. I'll do this tomorrow night. What do I look like, I'm paying for this? All right, I can also do this for you too, is plans. We got two? Yeah, I got enough for everybody, again.
What do you got?
Yeah.
Jane and I can share.
Well, I'll give him, I'll give him the gamey. These are your plans, so don't worry. I'll take mine, and if you want to, how we want to pass them, I don't wanna take up the time. All right. Going back. And this one here, very interesting plan. That's fine, they'll stay. Uh, first plan they got here is the nineteen thirty-four layout plan. And what it shows is the road going from Pleasant Street to a terminus of about five hundred and twenty-six feet, forty-six one. On the north side and the south side, it's a little bit less. Nineteen thirty-four layout plan.
Just, and we are gonna get to that, we have, we're doing engineering.
Well, that's why I'm coming in there.
Okay, this covers engineering?
Yes, it does, because the engineer drew the other part, that's why I'm going. Also, you'll see, tell it up, that's the nineteen forty-six town meeting acceptance, at the four hundred and forty-foot mark, which is actually at the corner of what I own now for property. So this, this plan has existed, this is what I get from the town engineer, this is what's already been, the town has accepted, okay? Now, notice, notice it's yellow here, and I'll bring it up here right now. And this is an issue, and I know, John, you said it's about engineering, but this is about engineering too. And in, in this packet, I also included some of the A and R plans I gave you previously. This A and R plan actually is a format of plan, that was done in front of planning board back about a year and a half ago. And what it showed was the same thing, but it was, I'll say conveniently didn't talk about this four hundred and forty-foot mark, but it did talk about the town layout plan. And we, as I've said in the past, whatever is accepted after the nineteen seventy-two goes to the center, all right? I know you got legal on that. We also have this piece in yellow, it's called Burns Out Private Way. I don't know where that appealed, it just dropped out of the sky, okay? That's my, that's the issue on the, right now, is that is in nowhere's land, except the Campbells had done, and I don't have theirs, they presented you last night. They did a survey, the most current survey, which takes, it cuts us down the middle. So they own this half of the forty-foot or twenty-foot. But nobody has identified the ownership, even on this plan, of that last piece. Whose is it? Nobody's taken ownership of it. The only way I know you saw those is you gotta do a lot of researching, and who knows, you're gonna end up in land court. But right now, my point in all of this is, this is clearly owned by the Campbells, based upon the current survey. And they have the deeds, and the guy did everything, but what's interesting about it too is, when I did look at it, the plan, he did everything around it, but there was nothing here, and I'm sure the survey, a land license plan survey would have put whose it is. But this little twenty by, depends on whose plan, this hundred and fifteen, this is like ninety-five feet. Whose is it?
Okay.
So there is no ownership, and that's why I'm going with the engineering on here. So right now, you cannot, and I'm not even gonna go to the overburdening and all that. Don't say that, you have to, right, but. I just did. Uh, the fact that can't even get out until that ownership is proven. And I would have thought that had you been the person that owns, well, doesn't own this yet, under agreement, but everything else, you would have had some ownership here shown. But right now, you have a plan from us, or a plan from the Campbells, and, but you also have this piece here that is not, nobody knows where it is or who owns it. So until that time, at least in my estimation, right? You can't, there's no access out here. Forget about overburdening for the moment, you can't get out there, he has no rights to go out there. I was interested in why I was approached way long time ago to sell my house, which I didn't quite understand, because even that, my two houses with the land, I didn't give you another unit. So that's where we'll end it.
Okay, for, for right now, because we've got town council's gonna talk about site access and all the property things. But what I wanted to do, and this is why this was to be, any questions on site engineering, the civil engineering aspects? Anything from how water's gonna flow off the site, the structure of the buildings, yes?
Can someone just point on the map?
Yeah, would you just identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Liz Pharaoh's, on that one eighty-nine Union Street, referencing to buildings two and three, and there'd be no, whatever, the water basins to catch the water. Where, in relation, I don't know, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, if you want to show that.
I had a couple more questions, that was.
Oh, we, you got time, Jeff? Could you come back to you?
Yes, absolutely.
So can we identify buildings two and three?
Two, three.
Okay, so, that concerns me, that we're not addressing the water. What happens when Pickarole Brook, which is where the water's gonna drain to, because it gets lower towards the flood plain? What happens when, now that we have all this hardtop and buildings and everything? I think a statement was made earlier that this building is actually gonna help with the water flow. I, I just find that hard to imagine, with all these buildings now. And the Pickarole Brook does get overburdened already without those buildings back there. And if we're not even gonna have drainage behind there, with it going, dropping down, I don't know, seven or eight feet, if that, it makes a turn behind my house, a sharp turn, what happens when, when that overflows? So that's my, my concern about engineering, and I have other concerns about it.
Okay, thank you, and one of the things, which was already asked, if they would take all the roof water and divert that into the underwater galleys. So I think that's a condition that the zoning board would put on, but your point still is taken, that it's gone from a wooded environment to a lot of impervious surface of the roofs and parking areas. Any other questions on civil engineering, yes?
Hi, Chris Campbell, thirty-five burns out, what is the height of this, the ground here? What kind of grade?
One fourteen.
So this is one fourteen, and what is it out in front of my house called, with the manhole that is green on there?
This is one sixteen.
The table out here, what is it?
Twenty-one. So this is one seven, this is one eighteen.
Okay, so this is one fourteen, so if you.
This is one sixteen.
Yeah.
And the road right here is one seventeen, this is one sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, almost eighteen, back down to seventeen.
Okay, just, and, all right, thank you.
Okay, does, does that answer your question?
Yes, I was just concerned about.
Okay.
So I got a couple.
Okay, on, on, like, engineering?
Well, this one, first off, I wanna make my own, that I'm a little, more than disappointed, the fact that Mass Housing has not given us a consultant. I have an issue with that.
Correct.
They shoved this at us, and they haven't responded. So here the town is flying by the seat of their pants. This, to me, it should be in the rules that these things don't advance until they give you your consultant. So right now, we've gone through two hearings without, and that's not fair to you, and it's not fair to your buddies. And I think that's a big, big deal. And, you know, once again, they tell us how to run things, what we should do, and they don't even make good on it, so, and I know that gets to be a problem, especially, I know you guys get tied up in this forever. That's, and it's got nothing to do with Mr. Petrucci, and it's more the state. Now, one of the things, from a general viewpoint, I'm not gonna, right now, is I've heard you people ask questions. And here's how I have an issue with, of the site dirt, you're gonna redo the dirt on-site and everything else. What I feel you need is, you need the people who can answer the questions, the discipline who designed it to be here. Now, you're asking about architectural. He's the, he's the developer, he's not, he's not the key person, you need the architect here. The environmental, you ask the environmental, that's great. He can answer a lot of these site questions you have, and all, and how they're gonna do, if I wanted to ask him, what are you gonna do with dirty dirt, how are you gonna recycle it, and how are you gonna keep the dust out, at least we'd be able to ask him, rather than getting one of these. So I would think that anytime we have these questions, if you're gonna deal with them, his discipline should be sickly there, whether it be the land surveyor, which we don't have, we got Rob, he, they can answer it. He's not the land surveyor, he's the engineer, all right? Architect, environmental, I know we have traffic, but I think you need that, so if a question comes up, like, there was a big question here. Where's the cellar?
Jeff, we, we know how to run the meeting, so yes, we will, if you already heard me say, you already heard me say that at the next meeting, we're gonna address the environmental. He doesn't have the person here, we can't even ask the question.
I understand, but I would, I would hope, I don't hope, is, this is what happened at the last time we went through this whole deal, it was all presented by the applicant. And that's tough, if you're gonna talk about it, I would expect to see the architect talk, whoever you're gonna talk about. And if you know ahead of time, you know, maybe I don't care about architectural, I don't show, but at least also going on forward, if you'd be great for at least me, is, you know, whoever you're gonna have here, how are you ever gonna do it, is at least you know ahead of time what to expect, or for everybody just to focus on, that's all.
Okay, and just so everybody's clear, we said, tonight's meeting is going to cover site engineering and traffic. So that's, that's where.
Correct, this was kind of like the site to start off with, but I don't, but.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Is there a timeline for the reach, um, the board needs to? Cause I'm trying to respond to our decision at this time.
Yep, once we have the evidence. Did you hear that?
I'm signing with Matt.
Can you repeat, please?
Yeah, if you have a hundred and eighty days to conduct the public hearing, unless it's extended by agreement, unless commonly done in forty feet developments. And then, once the public hearing is closed, the board won't be able to take in, in any additional information concerning it. They will have forty days to issue their decision.
And what town council said, the thing about the continuance, if we come to a hundred and eighty days and there's still questions that need to be answered, the applicant can, at their choosing, continue. Otherwise, if we don't have the information, then we can't make a, a decision that would be supportive of the applicant. So it is, as town council said, it's very common that they would ask for a continuance to make sure that the, the questions and things such as drainage get, get straightened out.
I'm sorry, so it's a hundred and twenty days from?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty days from the first public hearing?
No, from the filing.
From when they filed.
From when they filed, which was, I think, February?
Right, you earned something.
February eleventh, I think.
So a hundred and eighty days from the date of the filing with the town of Wapo?
Right.
Not the Mass Housing file?
No, Wapo.
And that was the eleven?
I think, was it, do you remember?
The thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry.
Yeah, and it's actually, within the opening of a public hearing, you had to open the public hearing the thirty days of the application. Then you have a hundred and eighty days once the hearing ends.
Oh, okay. So from the first three weeks.
Does that answer your question?
Okay, so now we're back at a hundred and eighty days from the March sixth.
Commencement of the hearing.
Yeah, a hundred and eighty from February thirteenth.
Am I wrong?
Sorry.
No, I don't think you're wrong. Was that the date you opened the public?
Yes, this is, yeah.
Hundred and eighty days.
No, no. I was wrong.
I, I didn't mean to point that out.
I'm pointing it out, I apologize.
Yeah, from the, from the opening of a public hearing, a hundred and eighty days.
So the March sixth public, first public hearing starts day one?
Of a hundred and eighty days.
Of a hundred and eighty days. Thank you.
Unless extended by agreement.
Okay, and any other questions related to site engineering? Because we do have the engineer with us this evening. Seeing that there's none, I'd like to move on to traffic. So, is the traffic consultant here?
A lot of planning, but the screen's gone. That's a plus. Uh, for the record, my name is Bill Scully. We're Green International Affiliates. We are the traffic consultant for the project. Some background, I'm a registered professional engineer, member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We, Green does a lot of work for public, uh, public clients, municipalities, and state DOTs in the region, including a lot of work on the complete streets, et cetera, and those types of projects. Which includes, we were involved in the Wapo Complete Streets. What we did here, we were, you know, as part of the process, traffic impact and access studies are typically done. So for this, uh, this proposal, we conducted an updated traffic study, building from some of the earlier projects that were reviewed, I guess, in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And we built from that, added new data, made adjustments, updated information, updated forecasts, to do the, uh, traffic report for this specific proposed project. Study has followed generally accepted practices and procedures in terms of the process and analysis technique. We examined, similar to some of the previous studies, we examined Pleasant Street between, from Burns up to Union Street, collecting peak hour traffic during the weekdays for those locations and adding in some additional traffic, both to reflect twenty, the current conditions as well as up to twenty twenty-five. So we're projecting out seventy years in the future as we do our analysis. I'm gonna go through some slides, but just in summary and in general, I mean, the project, even though it is larger than the previous proposals for this site, it's more of a multifamily type of a, uh, design. It still is a relatively low generator of traffic. I'll go through the numbers tonight. And it won't create any new deficiencies in the, in the project area. And it does result in a fairly low increase in traffic when you compare it to the no build condition. A percent or less, less than a percent change in traffic volume. If it's okay, I'm gonna, I'll go back here and flip through the slides.
You just said, less than one percent. What would be considered, um, a significant percent for something that would make a difference for traffic in?
Well, it, it really, it depends, really. I mean, if you're in a very low volume area, then a percentage increase is gonna be higher. So I, I wouldn't say just a percent increase means there's an impact or not an impact. However, in this case, we've got, um, Union Street and Pleasant Street carrying around five to six thousand vehicles a day. And what we've done is project annual increases of about a percent per year for background growth and site, some site-specific growth. So, you know, I would say the, the normal, at least analysis point of view is we're looking usually between a percent, two percent that get applied in the traffic, in the traffic analysis world. What we did is then, we look at the change between that no build of build, and we're as low as point two percent, up to about a percent change.
Can I have a quick follow-up? When you say one percent, you're talking about traffic along Pleasant and along, not on Burns?
No, Burns obviously is gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna be different.
Hold on.
Yeah.
You didn't complete the section.
A little different.
Yeah, cause Burns, Burns right now is, is a dead-end road with twelve or so. It's only gonna generate so much traffic, and then this is gonna get added to it. So, you know, we know how much traffic is gonna be added on to that section of Burns, I'll go through that. But I would not, I would not then come around and say, you know, because the percent change is gonna be high, I mean, you're going from twelve units of housing to forty-eight. So obviously, the percentage increase is gonna change. But I would venture to say that it's, it's a very low-volume road now, it's gonna remain a very low-volume. Do all those things.
Can you do a question?
So, so, you know, I've analyzed probably fifteen hundred projects over my career on, on these kinds of things. And several within the community of Wapo. So we're, we're usually pretty, pretty comfortable with how we forecast traffic and what we say is gonna happen. So the purpose of this traffic study is to, uh, one, understand the abutting roadway network. And again, the key streets in this location are Pleasant Street and Union Street. Pleasant because now, this project access is out to Burns, so Pleasant becomes a key point. Union because of, you go through that, that intersection, and Union then provides access to Route One. Pleasant continues north to Norwood and Route One, and et cetera. So we wanna understand that, estimate the additional traffic generated by this particular project, and then determine the conditions, level of impact, can motors get in and out of the, out of Burns Ab with the project? And how does that compare with the project, without the project? So this is just a, some of these are from the traffic report. The traffic report was dated February twenty nineteen, I believe, and you should have had a copy of that.
We have it.
So this aerial is in it, it just shows the study locations relative to the project. Project is in that yellow outline crossh, and the intersection studied are the two red circles. The existing conditions, as I said, we've counted traffic out there, so we know the actual volumes. We know the speed, we know, we know a lot of information out there. On Pleasant Street and Union Street, as I said, it's between five and six thousand. We had tubes out there for several days, um, in the fall when we counted. Speeds, the posted speeds on Union Street, Pleasant Street is posted at thirty miles per hour. We measured speeds while we were out there, and the average speeds, I, I, close to thirty, the eighty-five percentile speeds, depending on location, are above that. Union, as you go towards Route One, speeds seem to be a little bit higher than the Pleasant Street volumes. Than the Pleasant Street volumes. We looked at the Pleasant-Burns and the Pleasant-Union intersections in terms of crash history. We look, we look at three years of the latest available data, and we, we use the Mass DOT registry data for that. We didn't identify any crashes at the Burns-Pleasant Street intersection. Did, we did identify crashes at the Pleasant-Union. It's averaging less than five crashes per year. They're pretty much property damage only. The intersection isn't always stopped, and I'll come back to that later because, uh, as part of this project, we recommended certain things that I would call improvements or off-site mitigation for traffic. And the town engineer essentially concurred with that and requested it be added into the project. And some of that is, is directed to addressing Pleasant and Union and trying to bring things down a little bit, as much as we can. We got great visibility along Pleasant Street, the intersection of Pleasant and Burns, in terms of approaching Burns or leaving Burns, so that's very important. And as I mentioned, travel speeds on Pleasant Street in the vicinity of Burns, average speeds are a little bit above thirty miles an hour, but in that thirty-one, thirty-two miles per hour. So in general, there's, there's pretty good compliance on that section of Pleasant Street in terms of the posted speed of, uh, Union, as I mentioned, but that's away from the project now. We don't have access out there. And as you get closer or towards Route One, the speeds pick up a bit.
So one clarifying question, when you say five thousand vehicles per day, that's both directions?
That's both directions, yeah. So over twenty-four hour weekday period in, in two directions. So this, this is just a couple of shots. In the report, we describe the roads, we show some shots of, of the different roadways out there. On the left is a shot of Burns, looking down Burns from Pleasant. And on the right is a shot of Pleasant Street. It's all two-lane roads out there, ranging probably from twenty to twenty-two, plus or minus feet in width. Union's wider as you go towards Route One. Union has striping center as well as, as edge lines. Pleasant Street just the center line. There's sidewalk on Pleasant, there's a sidewalk on portion of Union, there's a sidewalk on, on Burns. You know, in, in all of them, you can, you can judge what condition they're in, but they do exist. So, so a major part of the traffic impact study on new development is to estimate the new site-generated traffic, how many people enter the site by vehicle and how many leave. So in this table, and this was in the report, we look at the average weekday. So that's that twenty-four hour period, over the twenty-four hours, you have a hundred and sixteen estimated to enter the project and a hundred and sixteen to leave the project. And then, in the peak hours, we've got twenty-two and twenty-four peak hour vehicles. In the morning, mostly everyone, in the morning peak period, mostly everyone's leaving the, the site if you're going to work, going to school, getting a start in the day, and the, and the afternoon. While the split is a little bit closer, most of your traffic is now coming in. In that PM peak hour, it's a period of, you know, the peak happens between four and six PM. In the morning, the morning peak hour typically is between, occurring between seven AM and nine AM. So we, we estimate the amount of traffic, we make an estimate of how we believe the traffic will flow in and out of the site, in terms of, in this case, you get the Burns Ab. How many am I gonna go left, how many go right? Or if I'm coming to the project, how many are coming, uh, either down Pleasant or down Union and make a left turn into the site, or coming up from the south and make a right turn into the south. We've estimated, and this is based on, based on the network that's out there, based on the traffic volumes that we count, based on looking at census data of where residents in Wapo work, in terms of by town. So you can start to gauge, um, pattern, where if I'm working in Boston, I'm gonna shoot to one or ninety-five, for an example. So about twenty percent of the traffic in this project we're estimating in the peak hours to be oriented to and from the south. And the rest would be oriented to the north, and that would be then split off between Union in both directions or Pleasant. Most of the traffic in the peak hours is gonna be oriented to that commuter pattern, which is continuing north on Pleasant or taking a right on Union and head out to Route One in the morning, and then in reverse in the afternoon. This one, you can't really see very well. It's in the report, all it is is saying, okay, I've got the number of trips, I know where I'm estimating they're gonna go to and from. So this, this diagram that's in the report puts numbers to how many vehicle trips equate to all of them. And then, and then that gets added to the no build condition, and results in a build, an estimated build network of AM and PM volumes, which we then analyze, and, and then compare it to the no build condition. So after you go through all of that, and again, I mean, so the first bullet, AM peak hour, the project adds one to five vehicle trips to abutting streets depending on the location. And remember, vehicle trip is either someone who's leaving the site or someone who's coming to the site. And the one to five represents, if I take a right turn out of Burns, I come up to Union, take a left. Or I come up to Union and I go straight through. So in total, in total, you remember the tables showed, if I remember correctly, twenty-two and twenty-four peak hour vehicle trips. So that twenty-two and twenty-four gets broken down by how I turn. I take a left out of Burns, twenty percent. If, in the morning peak hour, eighteen are estimated in total to leave the site, twenty percent, or let's say four, are gonna take a left onto Pleasant. And the rest is, the rest are gonna take a right. Then they get up to the intersection, and then it splits off further. PM peak hour is a little bit, you know, slightly higher, it's, and depending on patterns, it's two to eight vehicle trips to the abutting. And that, again, results in, uh, the percentage increases on those different sections. So, you know, I didn't put in the table, and I don't even, I doubt it's even in the report. It's in the, you can figure it out from the graphics in the report. You know, all that twenty-two and twenty-four peak hour trips is gonna end up on Burns 'cause that's the way to get out onto Pleasant. So we know that. And then, and we had counts on Burns, so it adds to that. So, yeah, when, no one's saying, there's not gonna be an increase on Burns Ab. But what the analysis starts to do is looks at the ability of the existing people, as well as the future people. Can they get in and out of Burns safely and efficiently onto Pleasant Street and then make their way through the network? And that's what we analyze. In this first bullet, traffic is expected to be able to enter and exit Burns Ab at level service A, A or B, depending on the, um, the time period. And everyone entering is a level service A. Might be B in the afternoon exiting. Safe site distances exist at the Pleasant Street-Burns Ab intersection. So as an example, uh, for thirty miles an hour, one would need two hundred feet of clear visibility along Pleasant Street for someone approaching Burns or someone leaving Burns, and we far exceed that. We, we, the distances are in the, in the report. I think we've got three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty, depending on, depending on the orientation I think we've got three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty, depending on, depending on the orientation or the view. So based on the level of service analysis, based on looking at traffic increases, it, it's concluded, and I mean, this project of the thirty-six units is not gonna result in a significant impact in the operations or change operations to any great degree at the, at the Pleasant-Union Street intersection as well as the, as I just said, at the Burns Pleasant is virtually minimal delay to get in and out of Burns app. And this is in the peak times. So in the off-peak times, when the volumes are that much lower on Pleasant and Union, it's that much easier to get in and out of either Burns or proceed through the Pleasant-Union Street intersection. The budding roads, both Pleasant in and Burns, Pleasant and Union clearly have available capacity to accommodate the added traffic. The analysis that's in the report demonstrates that. And I remember in the former projects, as we were going through either the zoning board or the planning board, you know, someone brought up, well, what about at Union and Pleasant and the traffic on the Pleasant, and particularly in the morning, going northbound? Everyone's gonna stop. So the question that came up is, well, how long is that queue and is that queue gonna block Burns? Our field observations today shows it never blocks Burns. And our analysis shows even with the additional traffic, it's clearly, it's well away. The maximum queue is, is several hundred feet up the street. So no blockage. So that was a concern and we made sure we looked at it again in this, this analysis. There's no major mitigation required to accommodate this project. However, we have proposed some mitigation. The Union Pleasant Street intersection, as, as I mentioned before, you know, it's experiencing between four and five crashes, reported crashes per year. Again, most of property damage. And I, I can't remember off the top of my head if some of the data reflects prior to the always stop. But, but that, that said, it, you know, it's still, you know, it's experiencing what it is. And it's either people not stopping or don't understand the always stop or... Well, it's either, it's, it's averaging between four and five crashes based on the data we have. So I can't say that some of that occurred prior to the always stop being put in, which I would expect it to bring down the crashes. But what I'm saying, that said, right now, the only data I have is between four and five crashes per, per year. So go with that. So it could be visibility. People can't see it or don't understand, don't know where, you know, don't see the sign and don't, don't come to a stop. Or again, you know, even though we've proliferated the always stop in the state these days, it still tends to be confusing sometimes and who goes first and all of that. So one of the recommendations that, which, a couple of things that we're doing is trying to maintain as slow a speed along Pleasant as we can or in potentially reduce. So remember I said, okay, we measured speeds. It's a little bit above the posted speed. So through signage and visibility and reminders to motors, because not all the motors on Pleasant near outside live on Burns or live nearby. They're, they're coming from other parts of town and finding a way to avoid Route One, four ways and get up there. So we have recommended some signage that is reminding motors that you're in a thickly settled area and speed should be much lower. But then also with the always stop, recommending, recommending stop signs that have the LED lights around the borders so that there's almost no excuse that you didn't see stop sign ahead. And, and what that does also is start to slow traffic down. So we, we've recommended them. The town engineer concurred with that and likes that idea. And we also recommended that, consistent with really the complete streets policy in town and some of the plans, that the, where the sidewalk crosses Burns, the handicap ramps need to be put in place. So that makes it more walkable, more accessible. So a standard ADA compliant curb ramps with detection on that ramp would be also part of the recommendation. Stop sign control, even though Burns functions as a stop sign, I believe the stop sign was not in place. So, you know, as part of the project, we'll make sure it's in place and, and I think, oh, well, this summarized some of it. So we have some of that speed zone warning is with that LED, again, just sort of waking the driver up. It doesn't always solve speed problems, but what we've seen over the last five or ten years through research is that just having some of those higher visibility signage, it wakes the motors up and, and the speeds do tend to come down a few miles per hour, which every mile is good. That is it and be happy to answer any questions.
For numbers, any questions? I've got one. The dates of your traffic studies, the week, weekday AM, you said they were in the fall. Do you know the specific dates of that?
Yes, so, so what we did is we took counts, actually in September.
Is it in the report?
Yes, it is in the report.
Okay.
So these, so a series of data was collected in sixteen and seventeen in September and October. And we started to work on this in eighteen. So we didn't want to collect additional new data, but we increased all the volumes we had collected and had adjusted in twenty seventeen and early twenty eighteen. We bumped them up another two percent.
Okay, but what other specific dates?
Specific dates?
Yes.
Give me one minute.
September thirteenth addition, you know, October twenty-seventh to sixteen, September thirteenth to twenty-seventeen. What's the reason for the year gap between the two collections?
This was, so the data, so this, this started in late twenty sixteen.
Right.
Former project.
Okay.
And we collected, and at that time, the, the initial concept of the former project was accessing Union.
Yep.
So we collected and focused on Union. And then in twenty seventeen, the program changed with access coming to Burns, not Union. So then we went out and collected additional data on Pleasant and at Burns. And then this started up with an update, an update in twenty eighteen. And just looking at the data and looking at the, you know, just in general, the, the, there's no major changes out there. So we used our historical data, it was less than two years old, and adjusted them up. So we increased.
So these were over twenty-four hour periods?
There was twenty-four hour for two, there's a forty, a forty-eight hour counts on both Union and Pleasant plus manual turning movements during the peak times at the two intersections.
Bill, I have a question. The, that's the route, exit route for the roofing plant in, did that come into play at all in the report?
Well, whatever, I mean, we had the count at the intersection and we had, you know, whatever truck traffic is going in and out, we have that. The truck, the truck counts were actually relatively low relative to the total volume. So the peak hour volumes on Pleasant were in that five hundred range per hour. And I think, uh, let me just see. Truck volumes in a table, a percentage is summarized on page seven. Three percent northbound in the, over the day, one percent southbound. AM peak hour, four percent northbound, one percent southbound. So relatively low, but, but they would have then also been part of the analysis. So as, as we input, we look at the type of vehicle that's at the intersection, whether it's a truck or, or lighter vehicle and then we make adjustments for the heavy trucks.
Okay, thanks. In your, sorry, in your information collected, did you, was there anything about school bus stops for children or anything? Is that on the street or is that on Pleasant?
I have to, I have to double check the detail in the inventories.
I didn't see it anywhere in your report, but I was just curious if it was in here.
But, so you, again, any of our counts would have school buses in it. Any analysis of the intersection would have the school bus traffic in it. And like I said, I'd have to just verify what we picked up in our field inventories. A lot of times we pick up a lot more stuff that's been summarized in the report, but...
I mean, you may have, you may have factored in the school bus. But currently on Burns app, there's probably not eight children that go to the end of the street. We're talking now thirty-six units.
Yeah.
That's considerably more children that are gonna need to be bused.
Or be bused off.
So if the bus stops, you know, fine, it comes and goes fairly rapidly. When you have the occupants of thirty-six units, that's a little bit more time getting on and off the bus.
It might be, it might be, but again, I would, I would, just 'cause it's thirty-six units.
All kids get bused from there.
So this type of, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, with the units, these units aren't like the four-bedroom units in the large family project. So really what you're gonna end up with is smaller family units, smaller housing unit size and fewer children with, per unit for this project. It's not gonna be, it's not like I went from twelve four-bedroom, single-family homes and I go now to thirty-six townhouse-type smaller units that you're tripling children. It's just, it's just not the case.
It's thirty-six units on a road that doesn't have them now.
And there are three bedrooms in a good number of the, which is, no matter how you look at it now.
I didn't say that. I didn't say no extra kids.
Hardly any extra kids. They'll be considerable.
Well, I mean, there is, there's data out there for these types of projects that can give you an estimate of what the number of expected school kids is gonna be. And based on my experience on, on a lot of these projects, I mean, you just don't get the large percentage of kids in the, in the boy unit.
I'm just thinking about the amount of time it takes them to get it, get on and off the bus because you realize that is going to cause a queue in and of itself, whether you're coming from Union Street or whether you're coming from Pleasant Street. And that school bus stops both areas.
Okay, so here's what I, I mean, I live, I live in the area too.
So do I.
So, so there's, a school bus stops, you know, on one side, you know, oh man, the traffic's going really fast. But a school bus stops, everyone stops. That's a lot of traffic then, for one. I, I live, there's a neighborhood right next to my house and I live on A Street that the school bus is going up and down. You know, they probably load ten or twelve kids at a stop and it takes them sixty seconds. You know, it's not long, so.
No, I get that. I'm just thinking of its proximity to Union Street, which is pretty heavily traveled.
Well, we got four hundred fifty, I think. And in the morning, in the morning, the predominant flow is going northbound on Pleasant Street, not southbound. So, so the actual number of cars that are even backed up on, on a Pleasant because of the, the school buses at Burns, you know, is, is a lot lower. In the afternoon, the afternoon peak hour, the commuter tends to be after the school's out. So, so I understand, I mean, I really understand and, you know, I, I just, you know, unfortunately, I probably lived with it too long, and school kids and buses and everything, so.
Currently, the level of service on Union Street is, is what?
Well, the intersection, so the intersection varies. So it's an always stop. So you have to do a different kind of analysis looking at an always stop. So we have in the morning peak hour, it's not an overall, it just goes by approaches. So under current conditions, the estimate was between B and D in the morning, depending on approach.
For the high school teacher, B and a D is a C, right?
That's very good. I don't think I can use that, but I like it.
So, so what did, I mean, so level of, the reason I'm asking this, it's either gonna move us along or it's gonna slow us down. Currently, the level of service, you just gave a wide range of B to a D.
Okay, so right now, the methods, the accepted methods don't, like on a signal, I can tell you overall it's considered level service C. And then each approach could be different, could be C, could be one could be A, one could be E. Burns, coming out of Burns, it's a T intersection, Pleasant Street is moving freely. So the, the focus of the analysis there is the ability of that average motorist coming out of Burns. What do they do? I can tell you it's A or B and that's.
What is it?
And that, Burns is, is B in the morning, uh, B coming out of Burns, A going in.
Okay. Post, post of, after this proposed instruction?
Post, with the project, Burns is A going in, B coming out.
No change?
No change in level service.
Can I ask you a question? What's the percentage going to go up on Burns? Of volume?
Well, I can, here's what I, here's what we know. We know, I gave you the AM, PM, P hours, so twenty-two vehicle per.
What's the percentage?
I have to figure it out.
I could, I had a similar question, somebody right here.
Oh, did you?
Because I wanted to understand that same question, sort of, what's the, so when I look at figure three, which has the no build peak hour traffic in the morning, if I'm reading that correctly, we have eleven vehicles exiting Burns?
There's eleven exit, five entry.
And five entry.
So you have sixteen.
Right, and then if I look at figure six, if I'm understanding that correctly, that's the twenty-twenty-five estimated trips with the project constructed. And that shows twenty-five exiting Burns.
And nine going in.
And nine going in. So if I, if that's correct, then there's a change just in that peak hour, going from eleven exiting to twenty-five with the project, and going from five to nine entering the project, just in the peak.
The PM would be the same, so.
So as a percentage, that's more than the double.
Percentage is gonna be high.
More than double, okay.
Yeah, percentage is high, magnitude is.
As a result of that, though, is there any, did you give any thoughts in any mitigation along Burns? Like, uh, speed limits or, you know, twenty-one hour speed limits or anything like that to, particularly in the morning, if there are kids going to the school? You know, I, I, most of the mitigation appears to be addressing intersection from Burns and Pleasant or Union and Pleasant, but is there anything along the stretch of Burns app that's sort of intended to calm traffic in that area?
We didn't recommend anything along Burns. It's twenty-two feet wide. I mean, it can accommodate all that volume, you know, whether it's future or existing. I would not be recommend, you know, we don't tend to recommend twenty mile per hour speed limits. However, that said, this, I wouldn't find any issue with, again, reminding, you know, as people enter Burns, you know, remind them with a, it wouldn't be necessarily a, and town engineer will have to incur because it would not be necessarily an MUTCD compliant sign, but there'd be a sign, again, to remind residents along Burns, existing and future, to stay slow, you know, this is a neighborhood, whatever. Right now, you probably have, you know, it's really just standard thirty, thirty mile per hour if, if you're in a thickly settled. And Burns is just too small a road where you would not have a regulated speed line. So I would use, it could be some advisory type and I don't, I have no problem with that.
There's one other question, I was just making sure I interpreted figure five correctly. Just looking at the, the table that's inserted there, the, this is site-generated trips. If I'm looking correctly at the...
I think this is the type of, oh, that might be, you know what, that might be adding up.
I'm just trying to understand what the site-generated trips reflects. It doesn't seem to be the same.
Those tables, I don't think those tables are correct. I, I just, I just saw that now that we've got it. What I'd have to do maybe is check to see if it's, yeah, I, it looks like incorrect. The table I showed you tonight, that showed AM peak hour, PM peak hour, that's the estimated, from this particular project.
The, you saw the, the comments from the town engineer?
Yes, sir.
A ticket.
We did prepare a response, I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, ask a couple of questions. So there was a comment about the number of background developments that were listed in background. So, um, there was a comment about the number of background developments that were listed in background, sort of traffic estimation. Um, and a question about whether the woodworker's site was included and some others. Can you just explain, elaborate a little bit why those projects were not included in the analysis?
Well.
There's an emergency room down the end of the street also.
Saying it.
There's an emergency room going in down the end of the street also. At the ball now.
At which.
Car dealership, is it now?
Oh, where the, actually it used to be.
Car dealership now.
On Route, on Route one, yes.
So I don't know when that, did that come before the board or something?
No, it didn't, they didn't, they got administrative safety approval.
Uh, by date, you know, a date, I mean.
Within the last month or two.
Uh, it was in the last month or two.
Yeah, they didn't do a traffic study.
So what we try to do is identify, does a couple, we look in the area, and because of all the work in the town, we were aware of a number of projects, and ten thirty-four east, I mean, could have been on the list, and it wasn't that it wasn't known or incorporated, although I, I think she also listed the woodworker's site, so we did know about them, but, so they were, they were inadvertently omitted in that table. But as we develop the background growth and what we found, even all of those projects that were listed, we identified projects that we were aware of in the, in the town. That, that, at the time when we identified, we don't know if we're determining that it really has a direct effect or really not. You know, where is it located, what's its access points, what's the type of traffic that might come in and out? So essentially, the, the background growth and our future forecasts are really just, it's based on the background growth of one percent per year, applied to all our volumes, plus the Maplewood condominiums that were put up on Pleasant, because they all have direct access onto Pleasant. All the other ones are either fairly remote, or you're on Route one already, there's not much reason to get off Route one, turn down Pleasant, go back to Route one, you know, uh, same thing with, I think we listed ninety-five West Street, because we've worked on ninety-five West, be the same thing with ten thirty-four or woodworkers, they, they shoot out to, you know, down twenty-seven to Route one. So none of them directly add on that we couldn't originate to. But we, but we just try to be aware so that, because sometimes, I mean, we've been in projects where we've got something right next door, very close, but we.
Did I understand, you said that you didn't include ninety-five West?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the woodworker's site is in closer proximity to the woodworker's site?
So we were aware, we knew, but in the end, it became a background growth rate to account for whatever kind of volume might filter through this project area from any of those developments. So, you know, it's, if you've got five to six thousand vehicles per day, then the one percent per year is gonna result in fifty to sixty, seventy additional trips projected in the future related to that kind of development that may or may not directly impact Pleasant, Union, and Pleasant.
Listen, oh yeah. Yeah, this is missing a few other developments that have happened in the town. The data that you've presented, all this information, I understand, the report's dated February two thousand nineteen.
Correct.
But the data that you, you're using is from two thousand sixteen into two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
And adjusted, but adjusted.
And adjusted, great, with a, with a flat percent or whatever the standard adjustment, you don't want to.
Across seven.
Yeah.
So, just in general, standard and accepted practice in the Commonwealth through MASTOT and the, and REAP, the Environmental Agency, would be to, if you've got data that is two to three years old and it's reasonable and it's, and, you know, what's the environs changed? Is there, was there a new subdivision next to Burns Ave that opened up? Okay, if that happened, then okay, well, let's go out and do some more data. They allow you to use that historical data and then make adjustments if warranted. We determine that we want to make adjustments. So again, we took not only the one percent to go up to twenty-twenty-five, but from sixteen-seventeen to current, we brought that up one percent per year. So, from, from twenty sixteen, we've increased volume by two percent.
But it, sorry, if I could just follow up on, so if there were a subdivision next door, you would include that, but then you would also add the one percent?
Correct, right. So like Maplewood condominiums, we added.
The one percent is not a substitute for the projects that you know about.
So Maplewood, we added, we did the percentage, and then came in with their projected traffic and added them specifically to, on Pleasant Street.
I don't know how the board feels about it, but we may need to talk about whether some of these other projects are.
I'm thinking of the one at Wolfby Walmart, the forty-two.
Current enough for our purposes.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. My comment on, my notes is, might require updating. Okay, I'd like to, any other board members have questions right now on, on traffic? Okay, if we could just open this up to the neighbors and public on, or addressing traffic issues. We have the consultant here, he can answer some of the questions.
I have a question.
Sure, just identify yourself again.
Yes, Liz Behrens, one eighty-nine Union Street. Could the traffic engineer say, was it a hundred and sixteen cars going in and out? Was that, was that the number?
Hundred sixteen, yeah, yeah, the forecast of traffic for the, for just this project, not existing.
Correct, just for Burns Ave.
Hundred sixteen over the twenty-four up here, going in, hundred sixteen estimated to come in.
Oh, so a hundred sixteen in, a hundred sixteen out, okay, that's where I was confused, I was wondering that in total. Um, and then my other question is, which months did you do those twenty-four hour counts back in two thousand sixteen?
September and October.
So I would be curious to know, um, during more spring and summer. I live on Union Street and deal with the volume of trucks from Certainty, and they make the left-hand turn coming from Pleasant going onto Union. And, um, it's, it slows everything down. Half the time, people on Union have to back their car up because they can't make the turn, and that's already an issue. But I would, I would suspect that their volume has increased drastically, and the counts, I feel, could be very different in a different season, so.
Yeah, I, I wrote down the dates, and I'm actually gonna go back and look at the calendar to see.
Yeah, I think it would be very different in, in warmer weather when they're, and, and I know that if I were to go call and ask what their sales were, how much volume they've done in a three-year period, what the difference has been, it's, it's gone up significantly.
And the other thing that I, I look at is Bird Park, utilization of Bird Park is way up with people driving near the parking lots and falling lots, so there's, there's some questions about, about this.
Mr. Jim, can I just, just.
Sure.
Do a little tidbit, and then you can still do your, list things for me, but, um, so typically, when we look at a residential, and sometimes we, sometimes we get stuck, actually, having to collect data. In the summer, we really don't, for a residential project, we don't tend to want to do that. We wanna be when school's in session, uh, we wanna be, you know, away from a holiday, per se. We, uh, if we do end up doing a summer, and what you tend to find, regardless of the truck operation, what you tend to find with commuter traffic and vehicle traffic is, summertime, the volumes are way down. Vacations, you know, cut our lot. School vacations, all of a sudden, now you don't even have the adult school-related traffic, forget the commuter traffic. So what we tend to see is in the summertime, we, if we can avoid collecting data in summer for a residential project, we're gonna do it, if we're down the Cape, they make us do it, so, because it's sixty, seventy percent higher than average. So that's something to, you know, keep in mind, and that's, you know, that's, again, it's sort of a normal approach to evaluating what you do in, in a, in summertime, and people go to the park. But again, if you take five, ten percent vacation traffic off, and you have a couple of people, and they come from all directions if they go in Bird Park, so it's, again, yes, that activity might be there, but it's not necessarily the most critical piece of studying this land, this land use.
Okay.
So maybe spring would be a perfect time.
Well, spring and fall, spring and fall are very close, so.
But fall is different for that, that business, their, their volume is going down, and the fall is a response.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay, yes.
Mr. Jim and Kathy Campbell, thirty-five Burns Ave, I, I'm just trying to understand the numbers, and I'm struggling. So they're projecting a hundred and sixteen cars going in, and a hundred and sixteen cars going out in the projected project?
Per day.
Per day.
Per twenty-four hours.
Per twenty-four hours.
Correct, so how many cars are going in and out of Burns Ave today in a twenty-four hour period?
There's twenty cars on Burns Ave.
I could make a rough estimate.
No, don't, don't you have that?
A daily, I don't have a daily, I have actual peak hours.
Peak hours.
So what we would, what we would do is apply a percentage, typical, typical peak hour percentage of the day usually ends up between eight and ten percent of, of the daily, so we have the, we have the peak hours. We tend to look at the morning and the afternoon, see what they are, and come up with an approximate of, uh, I would say, what is it, twelve houses, twelve houses?
Nine.
Nine? Nine, you know, you're probably talking a hundred to, about a hundred vehicle trips probably per day, probably.
There's twenty cars.
Yeah.
Nine houses.
Nine houses.
Uh, nine houses or all, those, weren't there a couple multis? Is it nine living units?
Two, two places.
There's nine.
So how many living units?
Eleven.
I can't remember.
Yeah, it's two.
All right, so what you, what you, just what you generally see?
Well, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, you mentioned that you.
What's your comment?
You mentioned that you did counts on Burns Ave, and you did counts coming, and then you did projected in and out. So I just want, I just wanna know what those counts were.
So what I just, what I said, I'll say it again, I did peak, we did peak hour counts at the Pleasant-Burns Ave intersection, so we can analyze what's gonna happen in terms of accessibility in and out of Burns. So we do seven to nine, four to six, manually count how much traffic is going by, turning left, turning right, coming out of Burns, going into Burns. That's what we did on Burns Ave, and we have, then we, then we, we take all of that data, and we end up with a peak sixty-minute period of volume, and then that becomes the analysis. The two counts that you probably saw on the street, that was Pleasant and Union, and those were out for, in the major streets.
So was it, the peak hours on Burns Ave, what were those numbers?
I think, I got it right here.
Okay, thank you.
Peak hours, total trips going out and in on Burns Ave is fifteen in the AM, and ten in the PM.
And he's talking a hundred and sixteen.
Did you say, did you say over a hundred?
No, there's a, there's a difference, we're talking about.
We're talking peak hours.
So it's only about ten percent over twenty-four hour during those peak hours, so you need to multiply that out.
Ten, so.
You know, I'm just, I'm just.
So, so hold on, if there's ten vehicles during the peak hour, it's approximately ten percent, so you multiply that times ten, that's about a hundred over twenty-four hour period.
Oh, with that whole day.
But, but, hold on, and then, but that gets to be, yeah, that's, you'd have to take the average of the AM and PM, so about a hundred and twenty trips, a hundred and twenty trips per day.
I think they, they ended up saying there's eleven, there's eleven of twelve, so it's eleven units, is a hundred and ten.
Is that, like, they get ten trips per day per unit?
About, yeah, I mean, it varies slightly, but for a single-family house.
Do we have to speculate though, how many, if I understand correctly, you took the data over the forty-eight hour period?
Not on.
Forty-eight hour data was on two counts, machine counts on Pleasant Street and Union.
At the intersection of, by the intersection of Burns.
Intersection was major, person sitting out there counting.
Just for one hour or four?
Four, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, same thing at Pleasant and Union position. And then we, then we compare the volumes, what's going past Burns and up to.
Mrs. Campbell.
So, so I just wanna understand, if there's, if there's twelve living units on Burns Ave right now, and Mr. Chevino's saying that that's gonna rough about a hundred cars in a twenty-four hour period, we're saying that there, we're adding thirty-six units, and we're adding a hundred and sixteen cars in a twenty-four hour period.
Different land use.
You see, it's different what?
Different land use, so we, we protect using the Institute of Urban Transportation's models. So this is a multi-unit townhouse-type development, while the number of units are up, it's not the same as large, single-family house project that was proposed before.
What he's proposing is.
So the rates, the rates are, the rates for that land use, so where a single-family will be typical, let's, let's just use for, I don't know, ten trips per unit. The multifamily type of unit, which would be condos, townhouses, you know, attached, partially attached.
Three bedrooms.
Is gonna range from anywhere between six and eight or so trips per unit. Because the hot, the, the family-sized unit in there is gonna be smaller, the number of trips going in and out of there is gonna be less.
Then what, is he, what are the seventy-two, what are the seventy-two car being areas for? I, I assume there would be probably two cars for each unit.
I assume that's to meet zoning, or come close to meeting zoning, I, I didn't, I didn't propose two spaces, but typically, typically town zoning is very outdated and recommends two spaces per unit.
I just want.
If you have a driveway, a lot of times you can fit two cars in the driveway, so.
I, I just wanna add one comment. I think what Mrs. Campbell is getting at when you're looking at the numbers, I understand this many cars in a twenty-four hour period. To them, it seems more, because let's face it, between midnight and say five in the morning, there'd be very little traffic, so if you take, if you take that portion of the traffic out, the numbers are higher, and I think that's why, you know, looking at that and it's feeling, it doesn't feel right, because I think that would have some impact on it, obviously.
Well, I will, I would say they're pretty, pretty well right, but that said, there's, we're not saying there's not an increase in traffic on Burns Ave, there, there has to be, it's the only way they can get in or out. So all of that traffic, you know, we've estimated, you know, a hundred sixteen in, a hundred sixteen out, a twenty-four, all of that traffic will be coming down Burns Ave. So if the existing is a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, whatever the number is you want, that gets added on, onto it. Still a very low-volume road, seventy, eighty percent of the traffic probably occurs between six AM and seven PM. The nights, middle of the night, it's gonna be quiet, no matter with the thirty-six or not the thirty-six, so. So I, I agree, there is volume added, I am not disputing it, never would, you know, but it still remains low-volume. I think the suggestion of, well, can we do some reminders to make sure the new people coming in know that, hey, you, you have to slow down and be careful, and there's a community here, a neighborhood. But the intersection analysis shows it, it works, the visibility along Pleasant Street shows it works. And on top of that, I mean, we are, we're proposing to do things that, you know, in, in some way, you could say, really doesn't need to be the project, town could be doing these things right now, you know, the LED border and the slowing traffic, but the project and the applicant has agreed to, we raised it and suggested, and he agreed, so.
Just the, the, sorry, just the question on the LED border that you're talking about, that, this would be on the stop sign that is, the like, what I would word, I guess, perpendicular, it's on Burns Avenue as you're looking at Pleasant Street?
So the LED, so Burns would just be a normal.
Okay, so I just wondered, because I, that might be a question of.
That would just be a normal, because it, I mean, a straight, good visibility, low volume. Um, I think we, in my talks with the Town Engineer, we would, you know, confirm with her and the safety officer the exact location of the LED flashing stop signs at Pleasant, Union Street intersection, in case it shifted over a little bit.
Of course, it isn't, I mean.
That makes sense, and the same thing with the signs of slow down, you know, keep your speeds low in the neighborhood.
Okay, any other neighbors on, uh?
Just one question, Mike Kowski, I live at twenty-nine Burns Ave. For this study, how many cars did you figure were gonna be in this thirty-six unit development? I mean, how many, how many vehicles will be parked in this thirty-six unit, in your numbers that you provided to everybody?
I'm estimating two hundred and thirty-two vehicles.
No, no, how many cars, how many cars? No, no. How many cars, how many cars?
Everything could have changed.
I'm sorry, how many cars are gonna park?
So the question you have is.
What was the number he used?
How many?
How many vehicles will be, will be in thirty-six?
Do you have, do you have a number?
No, our trip models are based on the number of units, or the type of unit. Which are based on, you know, again, it's based on actual data collected that these kinds of uses throughout the region, throughout the country. And we compile them and keep developing and updating models. But it's based on actual counts and similar use, how much traffic goes in and out. Regardless of how many vehicles are at each unit or whatever, it's actual data. Here's the magnitude, here's the number of units, here's what the model said.
Mr. Kowski asks, what is the expected number of cars that would be at this development?
Thank you.
I, I didn't make an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Conroy.
First question, do you, is, are you guys allowed, I don't afford any rules to have a review?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, there's one. Now I have a question for the traffic consultant.
Sure.
Okay. I'm looking up here, you, I love the block wall. I know, they got the thing, someday we'll get it done. But the proposed mitigation and what you've done, I understand traffic, you go through and you wanna make it safe for not only the cars, the people, but also pedestrians and so on and so forth. And you have some mitigation. One of the things that struck me, I didn't even realize going up and down that street forever, is that there was no handicap access ramps at Burns and Pleasant. I thought the town had taken care of them, but I guess they haven't. But part of your, when you do your traffic study and everything else, part of the mitigation, part of the stuff is not only the traffic, but you also have to take consideration of the pedestrians and the sidewalks, correct?
We can, yeah.
Yeah, but that is part of this.
What we did here, do the, do the ramps at the end of it. And put it on the.
Okay, so you've, you've, you've felt that sidewalks are key to this. Would you say that having sidewalks on a street are very important?
Depends on the street. See, I, I, I mean.
Okay, then let me ask you, let me ask this question. In your professional opinion, do you think it's right to build thirty-six units and have no sidewalks or at least half the road?
So.
Because we have, there is nothing proposed to that. That's my question. I'm asking your professional opinion based upon your traffic study and everything else. Is that a, is that a good engineering recommendation?
I'm gonna, I can't answer it yes or no. But I can elaborate a little if you'd like. So, I'm in my planning hat and, you know, just, just seeing livability or design. So there's, there's many projects. I, I live on a road that probably carries twenty-five hundred cars a day. We don't have sidewalks.
What street is that?
That's Jordan Road, the right side. It might even be three thousand cars. It's an narrow road, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, maybe twenty-three. And we walk and we use the road. And, you know, the neighborhood, we don't want sidewalks. As we go into various communities on that road. Now you go down to Chestnut, they finally after twenty-five years put sidewalks. And that road carries fourteen, fifteen thousand cars a day. So we go into, we do a lot of complete streets work in a lot of different communities and, and a lot of, a lot of things that we do look at, we'll go, okay, do we really want a sidewalk on the street? Yes or no? And sometimes you don't. You've got a dead end, thirty-six houses, it's gonna be slow traffic because it's a dead end, that's where they live. So I wouldn't say necessarily that that section of road really warrants a sidewalk.
But, the question is.
But, but when we analyzed and we came down to Pleasant, we said, geez, you got, you got a sidewalk on Pleasant and it's not even ADA accessible at the crossing, let's fix that. So my priorities change based on what I see out there, what's necessary, what's desirable, and what's.
But I guess my question, what you said, is I understand there's a lot of the old roads just got built. But somewhere back in the thirties, someone had the fourth thought of, we need sidewalks. But to have it, have it just stopped and then proposed tripling the number of people without sidewalks to access this. And the other thing that I would question is, you talk about an ADA ramp, you seem to concern, which I understand you should be, but there's no ADA compliant to get the person there either. So it's, you're kinda sending mixed signals.
On where the sidewalk currently ends?
Yeah.
Does that, does that end, I mean, maybe that needs a little repair. It ends.
No, but my point is, you have a sidewalk halfway down Burns. Wouldn't normal, you'd connect it all the way down?
You might.
Well.
But, but it's, so what I'm, I'm saying is, it's not essential, really, in my opinion, in this case.
But, okay, but the town thought it was essential in the thirties. So, I mean, I don't think, I think we've had more cars now than we had in the thirties. So if they thought it was essential back then, to me, what would be the smart thing is just to continue it.
We have no problems extending the sidewalk. I've just been informed we have no problems extending the sidewalk.
We don't have a problem.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm not recommending.
I understand where you, no, I'm just saying sidewalks. You might not wanna say it, I'll say it. Sidewalks increase safety.
Yes.
Okay, so, but we just heard that the applicant will provide sidewalks.
Okay, so the applicant agreed. It's not a hard recommendation from me.
I got it.
And again, just for the record, it really depends on the situation. And sidewalks may or may not really add safety, depending on the location. And there are some places in town that I would say really do need sidewalks, but don't have. And this section of Burns Ave is.
I would say, a place with thirty-six units going in, where people are going to be accessing Burns Ave to go to places like Bird Park, a sidewalk increase, I'll, I'll say it, sidewalk increases safety. Okay, so.
Okay, bottom line is, is the applicant has agreed to how the project is.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on traffic, because we, I guess, yes, Mr. O'Larry, how are you this evening?
John O'Larry, Austin Street, Waffle. I have two questions. I'm not sure if you can answer, or maybe one of the residents can. Is there a school bus stop on Pl, on Burns Ave or at the end of Burns Ave?
No.
It was at the end at one.
It's just elementary, but not the high schools at the, at Union.
Okay, so elementary at the end of Burns Ave.
At the end of Burns Ave or at?
It used to be at the end of, elementary was picked up at the end of Burns and middle school and high schools were picked up at Union.
Union and Pleasant?
Union and Pleasant.
Okay.
I don't know if it's changed, but that's what it was.
It will probably change based upon enrollment.
One would think so, yes.
So at this point, it's safe to say there's not too many people walking down Burns Ave to the, to a school bus stop?
Elementary schoolers, no.
Okay. To, to you to the traffic consultant, I believe you came up with about a hundred and ten for estimated trips, current conditions, is that?
On Burns Ave?
On Burns Ave, yes. Current conditions.
Rough, rough, yes.
And the two, hundred and thirty-two figure here, I think, is that in addition to the existing?
Yes.
Or the product?
Yes.
Okay. So that works out basically a three-hundred percent increase. So you're double, you triple the existing number of trips up and down Burns Ave. I just want to clarify that that was what the numbers added up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Joan Kowski, twenty-nine Burns Ave. It's just an observance, leaving Burns Ave. I go to the train station in the morning and at the stop sign, which already do now have LED lights at Union Street. It is, it is hard to get out on Burns Ave. At seven-thirty in the morning, or seven-ten in the morning when you're trying to get a train, say, at North Central. And then picking up two on Pleasant Street from Bird and Sun coming down, going south, I guess you would call it, backed up traffic again in the evening at, you know, five or so. I'm just saying, there is traffic and it can be difficult to see sometimes, pulling out from Burns Ave, trying to go left.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on traffic? Okay, we do have town council with us this evening and I hope to be wrapping this part of the hearing up at this time. But I think with you being here, would you, are you able to address the question on site access?
Yes.
And property ownership?
It won't take long because there are some unanswered questions.
Okay, so everybody listen up. I know this is one of the things people have been waiting on.
And I, I just did wanna know, Mr. Chair, you can, I, I, I know you're waiting on the answer of a technical assistance, but you can go ahead and seek peer review of, you know, engineer, site engineer, or traffic, whatever, if, if you felt that that was helpful to your board. So I just wanted to mention that to you, since I'm sitting here and I, you know, I.
Yeah, one of the things.
Wanted to note that, that, you know, the regulations encourage you to reach an agreement with the developer on it, but you can also, you know, just take a vote and oppose the obligation for peer review on, on technical issues that you think would be helpful to the board with the questions. So I just wanted to remind you of that.
Okay. You'll probably walk us through that in a, in a little bit. Make sure we do it correctly.
So on the site, and good evening, Mr. Chair, again, and members of the board, I didn't meet you earlier. I'm George Coochie from KP Law, which is Waffle County Council's office. We did look at, at least preliminarily, on the issue that was raised at the last public hearing, a disputed act, access and ownership issue concerning a claim by the Campbells. I believe it is a, concerning ownership or, or the right to use the section of Burns Ave at issue that the Campbells raised. And just by way of brief background, town council is not just one person, so you're not, I'm not town council sitting here and preparing everything for you in terms of advice. The way we try to, to handle things is, we have a team of lawyers that specialize in, in various areas and depending on what the issue is, then we will listen to a opinion or analysis from an attorney who specializes in that. So our, my real estate colleague, Shirin Everett, who does, who's at KP Law, but she serves as the principal real estate contact for Waffle, looked at this access issue. And she did note that, that she did have questions, you know, tending to, to show preliminarily the validity of the Campbell's claim. The, and Shirin noted that the developers would be able to use this disputed portion of Burns Ave for access to the lots. If Burns Ave is either a public way or if the developers have the benefit of a private easement to use Burns Ave, including that disputed portion for access purposes. She also got a little bit into analysis about a implied easement rights and also a potential issue of if that section of the roadway was accepted by the town as a public way on, on a subsequent time than the records that were examined. So her conclusion based on the order of taking that was provided by the town engineer is that actually that portion of Campbell, the Campbell portion of Burns Ave is actually not a public way. That's what Shirin's initial analysis provided. So she did recommend that the, the developer be asked to conduct such research to establish their right to use that disputed portion for access purposes by way of either express or implied easement rights over that portion. Further title work is gonna be necessary for that. And also, you know, the issue is still if, if at any point in time that section was accepted as a public way. If that was, you know, if there was evidence of that, then that would pretty much negate that claim. But where we are right now, and Shirin provided that opinion to you today.
Very soon.
You know, just a couple of hours before the public hearing, so you probably haven't had a chance to digest it fully. That was provided by your council, but it is something that, you know, we would recommend become part of your public hearing process. So we would recommend that you, you know, agree to disclose that legal opinion, the initial analysis, to the developer, to the abutters and the interested parties. And as I said, Shirin did recommend that the developer, you know, look at this issue and, you know, provide an opinion about proving their, their right to access that portion of the roadway.
Okay, do people understand what town council said? Okay. Do, I guess we've got a few questions.
It's just a question, quick question?
Yes.
Who are you? She, it sounds like Shirin did what the Campbells presented. I also presented something. Has she taken that on yet?
No, this opinion just deals with the.
Okay, so we're only on part one. So part two that I gave you last time, is Shirin taking that up, do you know?
We can provide, I thought that was already provided, so.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, she's gone based upon what the Campbells have given you. I gave you something different.
Yeah.
But the thirty-four and whether it's a public, their, their claim based upon is their land ownership. I'm talking about what I had pretty even presented tonight, that I had sent and given the board.
I think there is a reference to the plans. Yeah, I, I think we're at the point where it would, it would make sense for the developer to address whatever information that was submitted by any of the abutters and take into account what Shirin, you know, notes in her preliminary opinion and, you know, respond to that.
Well, John, if I may ask, is, if you could, if she's looked at it, just please note it. If she hasn't looked at it, just so I have an understanding whether it's in there or out there, or it's still being looked at. That's all I ask.
Just so, are you talking about the plan dated September eighth, nineteen thirty-four? That's the plan you just gave us?
Yeah.
So, yes, that has, that's mentioned in here.
Okay.
They have looked at that.
And they've looked at the nineteen forty-six?
Nineteen forty-six.
So that's in there?
And as I said, yes, it is. It is in town council's opinion.
All right, I'll get a copy of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know, as I noted, I, I would recommend you disclose that.
Yeah, I'm happy to give it to, I'll give it to the applicant, I'll give it to the neighbors, I'll give it to everybody that wants it. It's, it's public record. Okay, so, yes, Mrs. Campbell?
I'm sorry, I, I just wanna make sure that I, I think I understood what I understood. So based on the survey that we've presented to the town, the town council's opinion is that we legally own that twenty by ninety-five point thirty a piece of property. And at this point, unless the applicant can prove that he has a right of way or a deed of right of way, he's not able to utilize that property in his plan.
That's essentially it. I mean, she raised, you know, the issue that, that based on the preliminary review of the plan, it was not accepted, there's, there's no evidence that it's a public way right now. So the only way of, you know, establishing rights over that would be some type of visa, right? And that, that opinion, you know, there's a lot in the preliminary opinion, as real estate opinions tend to be. So I, you know, I would recommend you take a look at it, you know, and if, if there are questions concerning it after a review, I think that that would make sense of the time to pose those questions, because this did just come in.
Then there would be no evidence of anybody else's ownership. When you mentioned that it's preliminary on her part, is she doing further research or is she waiting for the applicant to prevent, to present evidence of his right to use that?
Yes, yeah, she noted what she had reviewed and based the opinion on and, you know, recommended a further analysis from the developer.
Okay.
So, not meaning that the board necessarily takes the developer's word for it, but that there's, there's work, you know, that the developer should really provide in the responsible.
In other words, the burden of proof is on the developer. He has to prove.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and just, you know, the way, just again, this is the first time meeting you, you know, the way we approach these would be, obviously, I consult with Shirin on this and would take it through for her. My main role here would be to help you with issues that are within your jurisdiction, you know, under the regulations. Answer any related questions that you have in terms of the scope of your, your public hearing process on this. And I would also be available down the line to assist in preparing a, a decision ultimately.
Great, thank you.
Good. So one of the things, does anybody have any questions on what town council just explained, Mrs. Campbell? You've got, you, you understood, you got the answer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. What's that?
Maybe for you. Based upon what town council has stated, will the town now go back to mouse housing and make them aware so that they can reconsider if he no longer has access?
That's a very good question. I wanna turn to town, town council for.
We're, we're not at that stage yet that we would recommend that.
Okay, so you're recommending. Okay, so you're recommending...
Because Shirin even noted that there would be further analysis for her to do to confirm it one way or another, but surely, so, you know, we're not, we're not near that point yet, we really need to allow the developer the, the chance to look at what the analysis was and respond to that.
Okay.
And regardless of that happening, I believe it was part of your to-do after the last, the first opening meeting, that Mass Housing was going to be contacted, did that happen?
For Mass Housing contacted for the technical assistance?
No, not that. Statements were made based upon information abutters had presented at the last meeting and, and your board said that, that they would be, you would be contacting them.
No, I think what we, Mass Housing has given them approval letter, but that's Mass Housing's review, that wasn't something that, was that a do-over for us?
No, I think...
Well, we did ask for the technical assistance.
Yeah.
I believe both the question of access and the, you know, as Town Council has mentioned, the thing, the developer will have the opportunity to look at the opinion and respond to it. Once the full record on that issue is developed and we, you know, if you guidance and counsel would have the opportunity to, to approach Mass Housing appropriate to raise the access issue.
So, I'm sorry, Captain Campbell, I think what Liz is referring to is when we were, when we were speaking about the site control, one of the comments was that the ZVA was not sure of access, was in their purview in addition to site control of the property, and I think that was the comment that when I had spoken to Mass Housing, they said that access and site control of the properties through deeds or easements or rights of way was necessary. I think that's what Liz...
Okay, okay. So what Town Council has just advised us is that, that still the applicant has a chance to, you know, present...
No, I understand.
Present that they do have site access, because we have a, part of getting the letter from Mass Housing is to show that you have site control. And if you recall, that was one of the first things I asked at the meeting, do you have site control? And the applicant said, yes, he owns, and then he's got, I guess, a purchase option on, on a property. So there's a difference between site control and access. And, but what Town Council is now advising us is put it back to the applicant to show that they have that and move forward. But I'm not going to, it's not our position to reach out to Mass Housing at the, at this point, that's incorrect.
No.
No, I understand, the first meeting was before we had this information.
And I should note, Mr. Chair, I mean, you're free to follow or not follow our recommendations.
Or follow.
Specific, specific recommendation was, I recommend that the developers be asked to conduct such research to establish their right to use the disputed portion for access purposes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair, my name is Dean Harrison, I'm a housing consultant for the applicant. I've been involved in Board of Housing for now over 30 years. I have acted as behalf of MHP, Mass Housing Partnership, as the technical assistants at time. I believe there was reference that you'd be contacting Mass Housing, you really should be contacting Mass Housing Partnership, it's a different agency. The person you should contact, if I may, is...
John Gennanis?
Yeah. Okay. Laura Schufelt, her number is 857...
Can you spell her last name?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know who you've been talking to, that's who we did send it to, Mass Housing Partnership.
We did.
That's who the letter went to, we got it, but, and I think I've, but John will follow up.
The letter went to someone different.
Okay.
I, I found out who to send it to and it went to someone different.
Okay, but either way, it did go to Mass Housing Partnership, not Mass Housing.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it went to Katie Bossy at Mass Housing Partnership.
If you don't know, I can follow up to, I have worked with everyone else on any occasion.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Yes.
I don't mean it, Jack Conroy, abutter, quick question, since there is this question, it's now on the developer, how is it going to proceed from here? Who makes the call, will they keep going or how does, how's it going to work from here?
I would have them respond by the time, first of all, I, I assume you're going to, seems like you've, you know this process pretty well without me even being here, so I assume you're going to vote tonight to continue to a date certain.
Correct.
You know, I would recommend, as long as the developer and their council feels that they have enough time, you know, that they respond to that by the time of your next public hearing.
Okay. Do you, do you hear that?
Oh, I heard it, yes.
Okay, so I think that's one of the things to take into consideration, how long are you going, you know, we've been moving this process along, I think, quite quickly, and I don't want to have another hearing if you don't have the answers to these questions, and I don't know how long it's going to take you to...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would have to say that all of this information has been previously submitted to the Board of Appeals during the prior hearing process, so it's readily available, I can make copies of it and have it delivered to the office tomorrow.
Okay, well, I mean, what we need, what we're going to need from you is a legal opinion...
A legal opinion.
I mean, I'll let you speak.
And...
Yeah, as long as, if it responds to this, that's fine, but...
Have you read this?
No.
We, I just got this this afternoon at 1:30, so everybody that wants a copy, we'll, we'll get you a copy, but...
In either, in either case, it's a civil matter and we'll deal with it civilly in the court system if we have to. I mean, it's not relevant to the hearing process, that's why we're not concerned.
Well, I am concerned because we're not going to continue with a hearing process if you don't have site access or the ability to move forward on this.
Provide, provide the documentation that demonstrates that we have site access.
Okay, so, and I don't want a bunch of documents dumped on Amy.
And, 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 Mr. Chairman, regardless, regardless of that, we, we have access off of Union Street that's, gets a site access as well, so we can play this game if you want with the access issue. If you don't want us to use the access on Burns Avenue, we'll use the access on Union Street, just let us know.
So, first off, we don't determine how you access your site, that's, as the applicant, you need to explain what you're proposing. Okay?
Yes.
I, it's not, listen, it's 9:20 at night, I don't take it personal, okay?
Somebody in the back has a question.
Yes.
Robert O'Leary, Washington Street, has all the documentation or information that the abutters have sent into Mass Housing, does that filter back to the zoning board? Any of that information?
What we get it from the Mass Housing is, so, answer your question, no. What we get from Mass Housing is a letter of eligibility saying that, based on their review, that this project is eligible for 40B.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would say that the application before it's sent to Mass Housing is also sent to the town for review, so it goes to the town administration, they review the application, they provide comments to Mass Housing prior to the site approval letter being issued, so there is, there is a comment period that the town has exercised prior to that site approval letter being issued, and that's a matter of the right, the right that the town has.
I, I would recommend that, you know, if anyone wants something submitted though as part of your record on this, if they want you to consider in your ultimate decision that they submitted to you, you know, I wouldn't take it on faith that somehow that documentation is made to you. You certainly have the project eligibility letter, of course, but if somebody, you know, had a question about something that they've submitted to some other agency, if they want you to consider, I would recommend they, they resubmit it to you directly.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add, with that issue of access, I mean, there is other times and similar situations where a board could not have a, the final, let's say, understanding of a situation, maybe a final permit for some other state requirement, that they can make it a condition of the permit. So he could not proceed with building the project until he comes back and satisfies the board that he does have the proper access. If he cannot get it through Burns Street, he would have, or an app, Burns App, he would have to show it to somebody. The permit, the comprehensive permit allows the board to basically render a decision with conditions, and obviously, there are some times that certain things cannot be decided, or they might not have a state permit in time of the 180, 180 days, but a condition doesn't give him the right, a permit with condition doesn't give him a right to go get a building permit the next day. So, just to make that aware.
But we could not, you're not an attorney, are you?
I am not an attorney.
Okay, so we could not condition access to property that is subsequent, yeah.
Not, excuse me, not condition, I'm saying what you would have, what kind of condition would be, would, he would have to provide reasonable determination, legal, whatever way you wanted to have it shown, that he has access. So you're not agreeing on the access?
You just, especially in a previous public hearing?
Yeah.
That it was determined that, in the case of the planning board, a project can't come forward without proper access, it can't even be considered by the board, so that is a serious issue that, in my, in my opinion, a condition, again, how can you condition access? It's like he gets approved for a project and then, well, he doesn't have access, so we have an approved project without proper access.
Some, some of what the, the developers and consultants are saying, I, I agree with a lot of it, it, but what John is saying is also true in the way you're approaching it, you really do want to try to see where we're at on this access issue now, you know, early on in the proceeding, because if, if it turns out that they, you know, I'm sure the developer, if they determine that there is a real site access issue for them with this disputed portion of Burns Avenue, they might want to redevelop their site plan to have a different point of access. So, you know, it is something, I, I think the approach that you're taking is correct, trying, even, even if you're not saying, going as far to say, we're going to, you know, deny you by the time of the next public hearing, but approaching it that you really want to develop this issue early on makes a lot of sense. Unless, I think we, I would recommend we just see where we're at on that issue, you know, as long as they respond reasonably in advance of your next public hearing so that we can look at it, and then I can craft any recommendation for you by the time of the next hearing.
Okay. So the last thing that I had on this case for tonight was peer review. We're going to, I want to discuss either publicly or we can do it at a later date, the applicant pay for peer review for traffic, environmental, and site engineering, so...
Well, what is the town or hasn't the town already performed this traffic?
Yeah, and that's one of the things, it's taxing our town engineer on, on things such as the, the traffic and, and some of the site engineering, which is really unfair because a project this size coming in, you know, she doesn't have the ability to spend that time working on this, there's other things that are going on. So what we'll do is we'll come up with a definitive scope of what we're looking for a peer review, and we can discuss that at the next hearing, where we outline peer review, and I've already said for environmental, traffic, and engineering. And this doesn't, and this doesn't mean new engineering out at the site, it's to have somebody take a look at the engineering, traffic, and just say whether this meets the stand, meets the necessities of the town of Walpole.
And what would be the process for selecting a peer consultant?
We'd have to agree, you know, you and the board would have to agree on a consultant that we have no conflict with and you have no conflict with.
Is, is that a series of people or are you talking about one to review all?
Ideally, a, a series, you know, if, you know, different people for the different areas.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can note to you what you're saying, it is strictly in accordance with the regulations what you're asking for, and those are three specific areas of the regulations, you know, specifically cited as an appropriate peer review topic, and it would be separate peer review consultants for each of those issues.
Yes.
And if you can, the, the regulations, again, encourage you to reach an agreement with, with the applicant, you know, in terms of the scope of work and, and, you know, you even get oftentimes a, you know, a, an estimate from the peer review consultant in question, try to reach agreement on it, get that funded and have that review undertaken. In the event that you can't reach agreement with the applicant, the regulations also provide a procedure that you should, you can just go ahead and vote it yourself and have that undertaken. And I, I would comment, you know, respectfully, you can't, peer review is entirely different than having your own town engineering staff look at plans, and that's appropriate in terms of you eliciting the input of relevant town boards and committees and officials, which is part of your jurisdictional obligation under 40B, to get the input from the town engineer, but that's separate from a peer review of, of these types of issues, that will be entirely separate and just, you know, not only called for in the regulations, but a common practice in any 40B application to have that peer review.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just a question on the process, my understanding in other communities where the board would identify three or four peer reviewers who would go up to bid and we would select from that list of people who responded, is that your, would be your...
Yeah, that's how, that's how it's been done in the past and that's how I've done it, so, yeah.
So in between now and the next meeting, will the town or the board be sending out requests for bids or...
What we'll do is we'll, and with your, you know, just so everybody understands, the applicant's paying for this, so he's, he's included in this clearly, but the consultant works for the town, the consultant works for the town, is paid by the applicant, and basically serves as an independent review for the, the town of Walpole. So, you know, yes, we'll, we can come up with a, a scope of work based on what's already been submitted and we'll, we can put that out.
You don't, you don't have to, if that's your customary practice, you can, but it's professional services, so you'd be able to identify some appropriate experts if you wanted to, but if you're, if you're, you know, as I said, if your customary practice is doing it by some type of bidding process, you could do that, but it's not required.
Okay, okay.
You have a business.
Okay.
And the, just the time is a factor as well, with the 180 days, right?
Time affects.
Yeah, it's professional services, so it's not, and again, it's called for in the regulations. Typically, what would happen would be, there would be some type of dialogue between the applicant and staff or the chair, and you'd come up with some suitable peer reviewers, get a scope of work from that reviewer, estimate on costs and proceed that way.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate in the interim between now and the next meeting, that we work with the town planner to identify a peer reviewer, come up with a scope of, of what they're reviewing?
Yes.
Environmental and traffic and...
And site engineering.
Site engineering, we could probably get together and discuss that and have the process another way.
Yep, and the only other thing, and it might be under site engineering, I'd add, in stormwater, if that's, if that's separate, but...
Yeah, now, there are firms out there that are multi, multidisciplinary, is the board's preference that we try and find a firm that serves all those things, so, because if we go with separate firms for each one, we have to set up a separate 53G, 3G account for each separate one, and it makes...
If you can find a suitable firm that can provide the, the expertise under that tent, that would work.
Do you know Chesley?
Yes, I, very good.
That's who we've had many...
Oh, very good, yeah, okay.
So if somebody can do it all, but this one, where we're doing the environmental, I don't know if that's something that everybody, everybody handles, but either way, you can work with the applicant to come up with that.
Okay. You might want to provide that, I don't know if John's dealt with John Chesley before.
That's what I was just writing his name down, isn't it?
Yeah, John's going, are, you're going to be the one that's...
Yes.
Yeah, so I would...
Okay, we're getting ready to continue this hearing, does anybody else, any... Does anybody else, uh, any final comments or anything for this evening?
When, Liz Barrows, one of the United Union Street, when do you plan to discuss the, um, environmental, or is that...
So, I think what we need to do is we need to get the, uh, peer review done.
And then after that?
And there is a, I'm sure, Liz Barrows, you don't wanna read a five-hundred-page report, but if you do, it is at the, uh, Town Hall, and, um, that is the environmental report, part of the public record. So, um, I've taken a look at it, and, uh, there's, there's things I think that the, uh, this is why we wanna have a peer review.
Okay.
I mean, is it? Yes, Mrs. Campbell?
Copy Campbell, thirty-five phones out. I'm sorry, will the attorney's, um, opinion be available in my office tomorrow?
Absolutely, yes. Amy, you, you have a copy of this one? Yes, so there's a copy at Town Hall. Will you be in tomorrow? You will. Okay, when can we continue this until?
Well, we meet again May fifteenth, and after that is May twenty-ninth, and then June nineteenth.
Okay. So, to the applicant, um, May fifteenth is one month, uh, that's one month out, or, uh...
Excuse me, John, does ZB meet on Town Meeting nights?
Uh, no.
That's why we...
No.
That's why we...
Why, what is...
That's why we're not meeting.
The Town Meeting may be on May fifteenth.
Yeah. No, we have to get it once.
Yeah, that's what we told by Town Ministry today. It's May fifteenth.
She just said it to you today.
Yeah. He's asked us to reserve that for all the dates in case of...
Yeah. Okay, then, do we have anything on that night already?
Uh, we do not.
Over twenty-nine.
So, May twenty-ninth?
May twenty-ninth.
Okay. Yeah, just in case.
Yeah.
We guess if we could have... Okay, um, how is May twenty-ninth for continuing?
It's okay.
Okay. You've got some work to do between now and then, Liz Barrows.
Well, the only work that we have to do is really deal with you, or I'm not even sure what else to talk about, and have to provide.
Well, you'll get a copy of this, the town council's opinion about the, uh, the site access.
Yeah, we have a, we have an opinion that, uh, we'll include that in the...
Well, you're gonna have to submit those again, so that we're, we're clear on what you're submitting, and Town Council's gonna have a chance to review what you, you submit. Okay, so, uh, this has been a long meeting. Thank you, everybody. We will continue until, uh, but I have a motion, so, yes.
Make a motion to continue to May twenty-ninth at seven p.m.
Second base. Okay. All those who say aye, aye, opposed, the hearing's continued.
Double.
Wow. How you doing?
You too. That was...
Okay, we've got another hearing coming up, uh, right after this, so if you have conversations, please take them outside. Um, yes, thank you very much. Oh, okay. You know what? Would you mind, um, sum it up? Are you familiar with that opinion from the...
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just a...
Yeah. Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
I'm still...
I'm not sure if he's still... Sure. You can check with Amy tomorrow.
So, the next case we have is ten forty-nine Main Street. This is commonly known as New Pond Village. If you like reading.
Can you read the whole thing?
Hey, sorry, guys.
That's all right. This is an application, respect. No, that's not it. Wrong one.
Yeah.
I'm gonna motion that one. Hand it back. This is an application from Benchmark, Senior Living LLC, case zero six nine nineteen, respect to the property located at one sixty, one seventy, one eighty Main Street, Will Oak Mass. It's in the zoning district RB. It's an application for a modification of a previous decision, number five one eighty-six, and either a special permit pursuant to section nine non-conforming situations, or a variance from section eight parking regs and parking lot design. A, parking space in aisle dimension table eight, eight, A-one, where eighteen and a half feet are required, showing the plan or any other such relief as the board deems necessary.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. We have a few, uh, number of department comments. We have a rather extensive one from, um, town engineer Maggie Walker. And, uh, have you had a chance to...
Yes.
...address these, these issues? Okay. We have a, uh, letter from, um, William Abbott from the, uh...
Same company.
Sewer and Water. The Sewer and Water Commission is, is in receipt of a request for comments for the notice of intent, uh, from the Conservation Commission and from the Board of Appeals. Based on the review of the information provided, both the applications do not relate to sewer and water utilities. Therefore, the commission would like to reserve the right to comment on this subject once site plan and, uh, the planning board is received, so we can review and discuss utility plans. We have a letter from Concom, uh, for New Pond Village. The project currently before the, is, be currently before the Conservation Commission and is on the agenda for April tenth, two thousand and nineteen. We have a letter from, uh, the Board of Health. The Board of Health is, at its March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting unanimously voted that they have no comments at this time because they feel there are no public health issues involved. We have a letter from, uh, the Planning Board requesting comments. The Planning Board is in receipt of our request for comments. Please be advised that there are no planning comments at this time. We have a letter from Paul Barry, Deputy Fire Chief, and I actually talked to him about this, and he had some concerns about the turning radius and, um, the ability for the vehicles to move. Have you received this letter?
We have, yes.
Okay. And, uh, so, that's, that was dated March twenty-eighth, so, uh, we need to make sure that gets addressed. And we also have from, uh, John Chavino, um, the, uh, he's got three points. The project, uh, was approved by the zoning board back in nineteen eighty-six for a maximum of two hundred and fifty living units, and the proposed expansion would bring the total number of living units at the site to two hundred and forty-six. Therefore, the proposed expansion is within the allowed parameters of the original special permit. The second point, the applicant, the applicant has requested a waiver, uh, from the requirement to submit various traffic data related to the project. Since the scope of the project remains within the original, um, special permit, I do not see an issue with granting the required waivers. And three, uh, other than the requested waivers, the applicant, application meets all the site plan approval submission requirements. The board reserves the right to request additional information they may deem necessary. So, okay. Good evening. Why don't you, uh, walk us through what your proposal is?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Phil Mackey, 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 twenty-six Washington Street, Will Oak, Massachusetts, is Councilman Ford on behalf of...
Uh, that's a good one, John, if you want it. All right. Go ahead. It's Councilman Ford on behalf of the applicant.
I knew that was for me.
I don't know. I won't make it, uh, up before. All right, so it passed out.
Thank you.
Probably the most environmentally friendly use of current, nonetheless, hopefully helpful tonight. Uh, I'd like you to walk, I'd like to walk through this memorandum. But first, uh, I, I need to kind of explain, because it's come up, uh, with varying members throughout Town Hall, why are we here?
Dr. Conway today, why are they coming? What are they doing?
So, basically what happened is, we do wanna modify the site plan. That's fairly cutting and dry. Buildings are changing, parking lots changing. That was the easy part. Uh, we sat down with Mike Yanovich, the zoning enforcement officer, and he looked at it, and he looked at the original grant, and he said, "Well, you're still under two hundred and fifty." Yes, we are. But the definitions of independent and assisted living have changed since nineteen eighty-six. Um, I'll just use my own family's example. Both grandmothers started off in independent living there. They got to a point where they could no longer do that. They didn't move apartments, they didn't do anything. They stayed right where they were for quite a long time, and they were happy at it. But then they became assisted living, so the unit didn't actually change. There was no change whatsoever. And then they moved off to, um, the nursing home, and unfortunately, things happens, you know, to all families. So, at any rate, in nineteen eighty-six, basically, you could call a unit whatever you wanted, assisted, not assisted, um, and, and I just kind of walked it through how that would happen, and it would change back and forth depending on who lived there. Now, the definition for assisted living is has to be licensed by the state. We don't have a hundred licensed by the state units, and we're not probably going to. Um, so, again, the building commissioner's looking at this going, "Well, it doesn't really fit in the breakdown, even though you're not doing anything differently." Um, and then we just kind of went through the whole special permit that was granted, and, uh, to the point of the, the parking number, it says you will have two hundred and ninety-five spaces. We have two hundred and ninety-six right now, so it's not really two hundred and ninety-five. It's not, it's one-off. It's more, but there's nothing in the special permit that says two hundred and ninety-five is the minimum. And so, a lot, and this is how we got here. So, our main request is to clean up the language, so that it tracks today's bylaw, and as, as I walked you through, what we're requesting is, let us have two hundred and fifty units, and there are density calculations of what is allowed for independent living. There's a, a maximum based on the size of the lot, it's two hundred and thirty-three. And so, what we'll be asking you for is, if you see fit to grant our modification, it's two hundred and fifty with a maximum of two hundred and thirty-three independent units. But the applicant has the ability, as long as it's less than two hundred and thirty-three independent units, to change the mix as, as the case may be. Similarly, we're gonna ask that you find the reduction in parking to two hundred and ninety-five be a minimum, and if we want more parking, we can add more parking. In fact, this particular current plan that's before, or will be before site plan proposes three hundred and six. Um, and I'll walk you through why, why we got to that number. But again, that kind of changes based on what makeup the main building and potentially the outbuildings are. So, there, there had, the numbers have gone up, the numbers have gone down, and so, we're talking expansion. Physically, yes, the building is expanding, but the numbers of units are still actually below what was, was permitted. So, that's a long explanation of why we're here, but I think we needed to say that, because otherwise it gets incredibly confusing as to, as to what we're, what we're doing. So, with that, basically, we're in a residential B district, and per section ten, residential care continuum is only allowed in RB or GR. So, a hundred percent in RB were allowed use, um, by special permit. As far as the location and present use, the site sits on approximately twenty-nine acres, just a little bit over. It has a multi-unit independent and assisted living building, which is the main building of, of New Pond Village, as a nursing home. And I would mention that, uh, over the years since nineteen eighty-six, the nursing home is owned by its own owner, and the independent and assisted living unit is owned by Benchmark. It has been condominiumized, so basically you have two units, the independent assisted living unit, if you will, and the nursing home unit. And so, uh, we're not proposing to touch whatsoever, um, the nursing home unit, however being a condominium, therefore needing all of the landowners, if you will, in this case unit owners, not landowners, consent. We've provided the board with the consent from the nursing home unit, allowing us to submit the application and go forward. So, uh, we do have a hundred percent of the owners of the condominium, which is really just two, two entities that have consented to this. Uh, as far as the site plan goes, uh, it was actually approved in case six dash eighty-seven, which is not fifty-one eighty-six, because if you look through, and I actually provided all the old decisions as exhibits to this, so that was actually one of Margaret's comments, is she couldn't comment on old decisions because she didn't have them. They are all there, and you will notice, if you read fifty-one eighty-six, it took you back a little bit, the site plan was actually denied the first time they applied. So, they got a special permit in the site plan, and then a year later, the, uh, site plan was approved. So, that has been in there. Do you know what the reason why fifty-one eighty-six was the... Um, I suspect because they still wanted at that point to go out on Boulder Street. Okay. I don't personally know, as I had just graduated high school, but, um, I believe...
Just a dad.
No, I don't know, yeah. I'm just, did your father handle this case? No, he did not. Okay. If he did, I would be able to speak a little more definitively about what happened back then. Um, so what we are proposing, and this is not the greatest of all plans, but, uh, Jim Bernardino can show you, uh, a little bit more detail, but... Great, that's perfect. So, you have, are we just oriented correctly? New Pond Village, there's the... Okay. So, what we're, we're proposing is to, at the back of the site, if you will, which is closest to the, the pond itself and behind, the main building, is put in, you know, put this up here, and then I'll move it down, four duplex units of independent living. Um, and we have attended, we're, we're changing the screening along the site, adding some screening. Um, we've made sure that we stay at least two hundred feet away from the edge of Willet Pond per the previous condition of approval. And again, Jim can, uh, talk to you as part of the specifics of this. Effectively, we have eight units, and we are relocating a number of parking spaces, basically twenty-four parking spaces, either in the, in the garage or in the driveways, and then we're adding, uh, some right here adjacent to this, this building. Main Street would be here, New Pond would be there for your, your, uh, orientation of the map. And I would note, because we're gonna discuss parking depth later on, all of the new parking conforms to, uh, the zoning standards. And then what we're talking about really is the expansion. I'll try and get that down here. Basically, at the end of the building, there is currently a parking field here that you enter in and wraps around the building. We'd be removing parking that's in the area that's currently shown as the expanded building, and adding, uh, an L-shaped wing, if you will, to the existing building. Can I just? Yes. So, it's not just what's going on in the back of the property with those eight units, there's something else being... Also, there's space right here. Is that a, so that's all new construction? Yes. Okay. Yes, that is basically three stories. It has a footprint of just under fifteen thousand square feet, this piece right here. And so, when you go to three stories, it's forty-four thousand square feet.
Is it connected?
Yes. Okay. It would become part of the existing building, it's kind of designed, roof lines stay the same, um, basically, you end up with that as you walk in. Currently, the buildings would start right about here instead of... In which they are right now? Parking lot. Parking, just empty, open park? Yes. Yeah. Is, uh, it, currently, this, the parking lot that wraps around the building, so it's encompasses this area and the area, has eighty-one spots. Um, once, and I'll get into this as we go forward, but we're proposing on reducing this by twenty-seven spots, re, redesigning or restriping this area, and then, as I said, we pick up the additional spots for a lot of those spots that are lost here, back here by the eight units. And then add a few more, basically for convenience at the back of the site. Uh, so that's, that's what's being proposed. Provided you zoning table, given, uh, that it's on the plans, at the hour of the thing, I'm not gonna go through each line of it. Um, I've, I've talked through the dimensions with Mike Yanovich, um, and he's satisfied that other than the parking, uh, we do not need relief from the board. As I mentioned before, uh, the applicant, and the applicant in this particular case is Brightview New Pond Village LLC, care of Benchmark, which is a subsidiary or affiliate of Benchmark, who was the unit owner. Um, and then, the application has been signed actually by my firm, but we were duly authorized, which we provided to the board, uh, on behalf of both owners, so should you decide to grant favorable action, this will be binding on the land, binding on the owners, and, and run forward. I have provided your, uh, ease of, of perusal, uh, rather than having to dig through the entire zoning bylaw, the applicable sections of the bylaw. Basically, we are here because a residential care continuum under section... Rather than having to dig through the entire zoning bylaw, the applicable sections of the bylaw. Basically, we are here because a residential care continuum under section ten A requires a special permit. It has a variety of requirements, twenty-five acre site, wholly within RB, minimum front side setbacks will be fifty. Minimum frontage, excuse me, rear as well. Minimum frontage will be two hundred feet, we all come well within those, or well beyond those. Landscaping is required to screen and obscure visibility from beyond the boundaries of parking areas and dumpsters. Again, we provide that, and we'll talk through that as we go. Here, it actually does provide a calculation. It basically says, two parking spaces shall be provided for every three units of assisting, assisted living, and one for each bedroom of independent living. And when we discuss parking numbers, I'll go through that a little bit more. Basically, that is the zoning bylaw requirement for parking. And we can discuss why we believe that two ninety-five, the less than that number, is ample for this. I've included the definition of residential care continuum back before the two thousand and eight bylaw was all in one place, and you could find it fairly easily. The reason I included this is because the definition of a residential care continuum actually has requirement, requirements, excuse me, in it as well. So if you don't meet the definition, theoretically, we would not be here, so.
What page is that for the definitions, just so we can?
It's on page six of my memorandum.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Basically, you'll see, you have to have skilled nursing facility, which we do. You have to have a congregate or assisted living facility, which we do. You have independent living facilities, again, we have. And then, it also provides other ancillary services. It's not a requirement, but says you may have them. And we will be asking for that to be clarified again in the modification. Because again, things have changed. It was built in nineteen eighty-six, some amenities that we take for granted these days, no one really thought about. So they're there, and again, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, no problem with it. But back to reading the black and white of what happened in eighty-six and what's there. If we're already in front of you, he just suggested we clean everything up. I provide you the excerpt from the parking regulations. Basically, two pieces of information there are relevant to tonight. Basically, under eight four C, you are authorized by special permit to allow less than a minimum or more than a maximum, which is not the case here. Parking requirement upon petition. And again, the board has previously found the two ninety-five was acceptable, but no one said that was a minimum. So, this is the, your authority to make that determination, should you decide. And then, of course, as far as parking aisle depths, you can see the space depth is required to be eighteen and a half feet. With an aisle width of eighteen, excuse me, twenty-six feet. And we come six inches short on parking only, well, in this area. And so that's, that will be the area we're discussing when I'm asking you for relief from parking dimensions. I added in the non-conforming situations, and again, when we get to the parking, we'll discuss this a little bit further. But the zoning enforcement officer, myself, and everyone else who looked at it, really scratching our head. Because parking, excuse me, non-conforming situations, as you're aware of the Mass General laws, which are also put in here. Basically, it is under your authority to grant special permit for alteration, non-conforming use or structure, as long as it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's the established standard throughout the state, and somehow it's missing completely from our bylaw. And.
That's with the rewrite.
Well, yes, actually, that, it happened in two thousand and eight, we know when that, that changed. But I asked a section about non-conforming off-street parking. Unfortunately, nowhere in that section is it talking about dimensions. With the exception of one place where basically says, if an applicant wants to take credit for parking spaces in a paved lot, he's gotta stripe it to today's standards. So arguably, if we had a blank lot, that's what you would do, and it's barely instructive on that. It doesn't tell you how you can vary it or otherwise, or what happens if you have an existing lot that is already striped and counted for parking. It's just silent on that. So I think if that's the way the board goes, and decides they want to act on this, we're gonna be relying on the actual enabling statute forty-eight six. So, with that said, I'll walk you through what we're actually asking. And I'm gonna go through the special permit criteria. In a lot of cases, it's already there and it works fine, but I do wanna be able to present to you that what we're asking for actually does comply with the requirements of bylaw. So as far as the special permit modification, as I've discussed, really what we're trying to do is to get the paperwork to match what's on the ground. And provide the operator of the residential care continuum, in this case Benchmark, the flexibility to shift things around. Without making, building inspector scratch his head and go, well, can you have more than two hundred and ninety-five spots? Or, does it matter that unit four A is just converted over from independent to assisted living when the same person's there? And I'd also mention that over the years, units have been added, units have been taken away interiorly. As dining rooms change, as waiting rooms change, et cetera. Right now, if you went through the existing, existing building, they've already been underway significantly upgrading the facility. You know, where there used to be units are now dining areas, or now library area.
What is the total unit count, is that?
It's always been under two fifty.
Always, what is the current unit count?
Current right now? We'll have to do that math, I apologize. That's, that's one.
Not enough math to do it.
My head.
Now, was that changed? Were they anticipating the new building when they took the units from the old building?
Yes. It was precipitous, but yes.
Yep, okay.
Hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay, so your know is near the cap of two fifty?
Yeah.
And, so then, well, you're gonna walk us through the criteria?
Yep. So, we're at a hundred and ninety-nine, and we're proposing in this iteration, two hundred and forty-six. We would like to leave the two hundred and fifty as the cap, because again, interior wise, if one of the dining rooms goes away, and put four more units back in, it seems appropriate, we'd like to maintain that now. But the current proposal in front of you is the two hundred and forty-six. And so, I provided what the initial grant allowed, and again, ninety beds, skilled nursing facility, we're not asking for any change there. It allowed a hundred of assisted units, excuse me, yes, a hundred assisted living units, a hundred fifty independent living units. And again, the main difference between nineteen eighty-six and now is the definition of what is an assisted living facility. It really hasn't changed the makeup of the population or the needs of them. But we can no longer just say, okay, occupant Jane Doe now needs to be assisted with life, and so this is an assisted unit. We, it has to be licensed, and so the numbers come down, even though the actual services. And more importantly, the parking and traffic's are, haven't changed here. So, has those, it talks about?
Can I say a quick question on that?
Absolutely.
So the one hundred and one fifty breakdown, and you talked about wanting the flexibility to sort of reclassify units.
Yes.
Are you saying, within those caps of one hundred and one fifty, you want flexibility to go up to?
We're actually going to request, you beat me to it by the page, that's okay, no worries. We're, we're gonna actually request, because if you look at the section ten A, it gives you a very specific, you can have this many units per this sized lot. And if you do the calculation out, we'll have two hundred and thirty-three independent units. And so what we would ask is that we, the board allow us two hundred and fifty units with a cap of independent units being two hundred and thirty-three. Which we, we can more than meet. And then within that, underneath that, as long as we don't go over the two hundred and thirty-three, we could have a hundred independent units and a hundred and fifty assisted. We could have one independent and two hundred and forty-nine assisted, but we can't have more than two hundred and thirty-three independent.
Does that affect the sort of continuing of care concept?
Exactly.
If you go to two thirty-three, but have only seventeen assisted now, you're still qualified as a?
You do.
Continuum, it's such a.
And as we, again, things, things have changed, so we're actually adding in, I shouldn't say adding, it exists now. In nineteen eighty-six, memory care units didn't exist, now they do. And New Pond has two floors, I believe, dedicated, or one now and one coming.
One floor.
So, all right, it currently has fifteen units. And so, by definition, those are licensed by the state, and they are absolutely assisted. And that wasn't even contemplated back in eighty-six, so that's why we're just asking.
Within like five years, you mean?
Yes. And then it talks about ancillary services, new stand, greenhouse, woodworking shop, business office, and accessory sign. If, again, I provided you the definition, there are a whole lot of other services that are now accepted and expected in a residential care continuum. And basically, we're asking that if it's allowing another definition now, it'd be allowed on site. And again, this went back to Mike Ganovich's conundrum. He has no problem with what we're doing, but it doesn't really match the paperwork. So, that's effectively what is there and what we're asking for. If we get to that point, it won't be tonight, I would ask that we actually work with the board to craft this decision. Because we tried to do a red line, and just say, hey, substitute this for that, and it doesn't work.
Yeah. My inclination, I read the application, and I think my inclination would be to have sort of a newly drafted decision.
Which?
Everything goes in.
Which we agree.
Yeah.
Ideally, and you saw the, there's been five modifications, three actual modifications, two were withdrawn. You know, ideally, we walk out of here, and the very last condition is, this supersedes all previous decisions and this controls. And so, again, not tonight, but when we get to that point, we would like to work with you to actually craft the conditions and the decision. So on to the actual criteria. It does comply with such criteria standards that should be set forth in the bylaw. And so we, again, are proposing, and I'm gonna summarize some of these things, because as I've been answering your questions, some of these have come up. And I'm not interested in keeping you here, or myself for that matter, until all hours of the night. But basically, the, we would submit that the proposed use is absolutely in harmony with the intent of bylaw. The bylaw provides for residential care continuum, this is actually the only one in town. It has been there since nineteen eighty-six, and it has been operating as far as any of us are aware, with minimal or no complaints, and well. From the front of the property is kind of, so we describe it, if you drive down one A, you can, you know, I've missed a sign more than once trying to go visit my family. They just renewed them a little bit, so that is helpful. But it is effectively screened very well from one A. And then, from, like I said, Willett Pond, we're well over two hundred feet. I know there have been concerns from the abutters on either side, Bullock Street, I think mainly. There's a newer development on the other side, and to the best of our ability, we are maintaining or improving any screening that's already there. So, we believe that we are absolutely, in harmony at least, with the purposes of the bylaw. And we actually think the four cottages add to the transitional nature. There are some folks, I'm not naming names, but I know a few personally right now, that like that idea. They understand that eventually that something like this is probably a good idea for their future. But are totally not ready to move into a basically building looks like apartment. So, by providing, I mean, again, we're not proposing this via preponderance, this is not an over fifty-five community, this is a residential care continuum. But we are proposing eight units that look an awful lot more like what people are, at least around here, are used to living in. With the idea being, they go from there into the main building, and again, progress it. So I actually think, and we would submit that the addition of the eight cottages is.
He shows the picture.
Yeah. A good way for a minimal number of people, or a minimal number of people, to enter into the idea of residential care continuum. It's probably not so much for their benefit as their families, as they're trying to convince mom and dad that, hey, you really need to get help.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that negatively, but I think most of us have had this discussion.
There's, there's four, four of these cottage, but eight units?
Correct.
Okay.
They're each ten floors.
They do, okay. So, total, and how many, how many bedrooms in each one?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms on each of the cottages, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, the second one shall not have, excuse me, the second piece of criteria, shall not have vehicular, pedestrian traffic of a type and quantity to adversely affect the immediate neighborhood. Again, respectfully, we're not asking to increase over what's already allowed and has been discussed. And therefore, we don't actually believe that there'll be any impact. Again, we're calling it an expansion, but it's, it's expansion of a footprint, but not an expansion of a population.
But, just a question on that.
Yeah.
If you're going from, I'm assuming the assisted living units, there's no traffic associated with those? Or, you know, not of the residents?
Not memory care.
Memory?
Right. The, we actually mentioned that, there's fifteen memory care. There is none, but there's still, again, when you look at the calculations, it's an assisted unit, therefore is required to have a spot per.
But if you go just from one fifty independent living units up to two thirty-three, would you expect an increase in traffic as a result of that?
Not terribly, no.
Yeah, so, I would think, it is gonna be an increase, right?
A little bit, yeah.
It would be, but from what there, what has historically been there, I don't think it's gonna change by an order of magnitude.
No, not an order of magnitude.
To discuss, to go back to the earlier thing, earlier hearing I say, I'm not gonna try and tell you that, yes, if you have two hundred and thirty-three independent, that's got less or the same traffic as a hundred and fifty. But what I will say is, because of the way the definitions were identified, again, I'll use my own crime hunters experience. There was a brief period when they transitioned from independent to assisted. Probably shouldn't have had a car, but they did. And I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to get lepidior that, but, I mean, historically, this is a touchy situation. If we went to two hundred and thirty-three and, math is not my strong suit on my feet, but fifteen, absolutely, there would be some more traffic than there is right now.
If I could just add on that, you know, with these units themselves, a lot of the trips that you generate, they're not going to be during the peak hours. We're retired individuals, so you'll see an off hour.
Okay.
Also, when you look at the trip generations, people are running to the grocery store, they're going out to eat. This is a full functioning service, so those trips that you generally see, you're being serviced. So, you know, with that, we're expecting a much lesser, you know, trip generation. So, you know, we did ask for a waiver of that for, you know, that reason, as well as the proposal was, you know, below what was originally approved as well. You know, the mailman's not gonna come for an extra trip. He's making one trip in and out. Same thing with the UPS guys or the food deliveries. So there's a lot of things that are captured within the existing development, that you can exclude those trips that would normally be generated with a new development.
Is like physical therapy and speech and all that in the dwelling?
It can, it can be. They have classes, they have.
Hair salons and.
Workout rooms for.
That's all there now.
It's all currently right there. And I'm sure if there is a, I mean, we need to, I'm sorry, I'm filled up from Benchmark, actually, yeah. We do actually contract with a third party, physical therapy, occupational therapy.
So they will come in and then?
But the space, but again, that's usually one or two persons coming in, and then we have our space in our unit, exactly, in our building.
John, quick question. You said the cottages will have three bedrooms?
Yes.
Will there be a provision, like in some over fifty-five housing developments, to limit people under a certain age from coming and staying there? Like, I think someone's.
No grandchildren.
Children coming and stay there for three months or something, because you up the bedroom count.
Yep.
That's, that becomes possible.
I, I think, I think that would be, it's tough to, I will say, it is tough, I have, we have seen these in some other places. I don't have a problem with it, if you could just put some kind of.
No, we can't, because you can't enforce it.
Exactly.
And, and that's why.
The caretaker's home.
So, so that's, that's why.
Well, that would be an exception though.
First off, I think that's a, I was sort of surprised to hear that there were three, three bedrooms. I think that's, I was sort of surprised to hear that there were three bedrooms. But, you know, that's, let's get through the presentation tonight, because we are gonna continue this.
Absolutely.
But let's, and I know we have neighbors here and it's been a long night for them too, so, let's get through the presentation, but I think we have a lot of questions on this stuff. I mean, all good.
Yes. Again, we're here to work with you. I mean, the ideal is if this is all done, everybody's happy. And there's no reason, it shouldn't be that way.
So, if you can just move it along so that we can get a chance to find out concerns of the neighbors.
All right, so, as far as number of residents, employees, customers, I think I've already covered that one head and osm. We comply with the dimensional requirements. I'm just kinda flipping through page thirteen at this point. This is a residential use, it's not going to create noise, vibrations, dust, heat, or smoke. And we've already talked about the character of the neighborhood and its impact on that. And then the last is not incompatible purposes zoning bylaw, and we've already covered that one as well. I can move along when necessary.
That's a good one, too.
That's right.
Because I know we're gonna, you know, it will be more productive at the next meeting, ask specific questions, again, get specific answers.
Usually, the best way to do this is introduce the project in the scope of what you're proposing and, you know, find out what the concerns are from the neighbors and from the board.
All right, so, one that we, you actually do need to think about, again, we don't need to decide tonight, with the park, there's basically, and I talked about the zoning enforcement officer, three ways to look at this. The entire parking lot, for better or worse, does not conform to the dimensional requirements of section eight. And we're not proposing, in the areas that we're not affecting, we're not proposing any changes. It works, we wanna leave well enough alone. So, that really is, narrowed your question down to what do you want to do with this area? So, there are three options that we discussed with the zoning enforcement officer, and he was okay with any one of them.
Let's see what they are.
It's up to you.
One, basically, it was his opinion that for whatever reason eighty-six, the board looked at this and said,
it's a residential care, it's a residential care continuum, and as such, we control the site and we were happy with what was on there. So, you could take that same approach, basically do nothing of the note in the decision somewhere, that that's what you're doing. Second option, decide that the parking in the area, it's existed for thirty years. It's, by the definitions of our bylaw, after ten years becomes, whether it was non-complying or not, becomes non-conforming. And you could treat it as non-conforming parking, and therefore, it would be eligible for a special permit under special, section nine, for alteration. And then, lastly, you could just simply say it requires a variance for dimension relief of six inches per participant. And so, those are pretty much your three options, as he saw fit, and we're comfortable with whatever the board decides.
Would, and I'm not saying we'd go this way, but would the other option be to, that you would build it to modern standards for parking?
Well, that is a discussion we're willing to have with the board. Basically, what's going to happen is that pushes this boundary that way. The wetlands are right here. So, it's a balancing act between extra pavement and close to the wetlands, and that will require retaining walls and drainage, et cetera, as opposed to just grading. I'm not gonna pretend that it's not more expensive, but it's a balancing act, which is, which we're trying to prevent more.
And this is one of my concerns, is that it's almost like we're trying to put ten pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag here. Where you constrict it on the site, you have parking, and now you're giving up that parking for this big building.
We are, but if, as I described this, and maybe this will help you, you frame which way you want to go. And you're right, you know, you could absolutely say, no, this is really not what we wanna do. And so, move the line. And can we do it? Yes, we can. It's not our preferred method, and this is why. Yes, it is, it is on its face, five pounds into a ten-pound bag. However, currently in this area, the parking stalls range between seventeen and eighteen feet. That's what is on the ground. The parking aisles range from twenty-three to twenty-five feet. So, stalls are all at a minimum of six inches deficient to up to a foot and a half. The parking aisles are all deficient at a minimum of one foot, in some cases, three feet. What we're proposing is to widen all the stalls, the aisles, to twenty-six feet. So, that actually absolutely complies, and we're talking with the fire department to make sure that we have turning radii, et cetera. And all of the spaces, whether they were seventeen or eighteen, all go up to eighteen feet. So, what we're talking about is basically two feet of relief. Can it be done? If that's the way the board truly feels, that is fine. But I would submit, we're actually making this area significantly more conforming than is there today. So, I would just ask you to take that into consideration as to how you wanna progress in this particular area.
Yeah, I could just add to, for record, Jim, we're dealing with pole or engineering. We looked at refining the parking areas to be within the existing paved areas that there, that's there. When you look at the limits, we basically held the boundary along this edge of the parking area as it's a steep slope as it drops down. It's very steep. So, when you look at moving two feet over, that two feet over is a two-foot drop. So, to catch up to that, we would need to introduce, you know, relatively significant walls, which would cause some dramatic land alterations within the buffer zones, or hence shifting the roadway and everything further over, which also is an existing very large stone wall that's like a twelve-foot drop there. So, it's almost a domino effect, you know, we're trying to weigh, you know, one, cost, we're not gonna sidestep that. But two, also the impact to the resource area and the buffer zones that would be necessary to make that construction happen. You know, the longevity of a steep slope being exposed for a number of weeks while construction happens, it rains, washout, things of that nature. So, we were weighing both the construction costs as well as, you know, impacts during construction and within the resource buffer zone areas.
Good question. So, aside from what the bylaw requires in terms of parking, is the parking demand, does the existing parking satisfy your demand and for, would you go with less parking to satisfy your actual usage?
Phil, I have to ask you.
We typically don't have any issues really with parking. There's usually, we have assigned spaces for, that go to units. We have other areas we dedicate for visitors and staff. So, typically, you know, if you look at the larger ones, that's kind of along the rear of the site, that's our staff parking, et cetera. And with the numbers spots, and then that leaves other ones for visitors. So, it's fairly well regulated and pretty well controlled. And we generally can find that, do people park in a numbered spaces where we shouldn't? Yes, but we police that pretty well. But generally speaking, there's, we've always got spaces available.
Do you have an opinion as to whether you should make the parking spaces bigger and the aisles smaller versus the
Yes, I do have an opinion on that. Just from a standard engineering practice, the typical dimensions that we use is an eighteen-foot depth, twenty-four-foot aisle. So, your town regulations are low above and beyond what the normal is.
That's right.
So, what we did here is we took what we think would be more appropriate for safety concerns and circulation through the site. Knowing that we have elder community, chances are we're gonna have emergency vehicles coming and going from the site. So, we opted to look at having a wider drive aisle so that the emergency apparatus can go, come in and go through the site. We have prepared exhibits, we haven't submitted to the fire department yet, but we'll do so. The fire apparatus can go into the site, all the way around by the cottages, in that parking area, around the parking area. So, we do have appropriate access in and throughout the site from fire and emergency vehicles. And that's maintaining the twenty-six-foot wide, you know, clear width throughout, you know. Yes, we do see some larger vehicles now, the bigger SUVs and things of that nature. But you don't see too many grandmothers driving a big Lincoln Abigail, you know, with their six kids going to soccer practice. So, we do tend to small, you know, you do get some big Cadillacs and some Oldsmobiles, but you don't generally see the larger SUVs. So, I think eighteen feet would be the appropriate dimension to maintain the wider drive aisle for safety concerns.
So, we're really, I think you've introduced the project for tonight.
Fair enough.
And now, what I'd like to do is turn it over. Any board members have questions we've been asking them along the way?
Nope.
Neighbors, do you have any comments or questions on this, or wish your support, wish your concerns? Okay. I guess that's, that's good.
It is a good
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Well, Carol Lane, Wood Street, I guess this is more of a general question than this. It seems like all the developments now wanna change the requirements for parking that are in the booklet. And they want, you see, you see that with the new apartments going in and things like that. It seems, it seems, do we have the wrong number in the book? Are, why, you know, we can't seem to agree on the size of the parking spaces and the number of them.
Actually, I'm gonna let John answer that. Do we have the wrong number in the book?
Well, no, it's not uncommon for towns to have very antiquated parking bylaws. Just with the zoning bylaws in general, it's very difficult for towns to keep up to date on what's happening with the private sector. You'll find that most towns have zoning regulations, specifically parking regulations, that are way too much for what's happening in modern-day business. So, that's why you find boards like the ZB and planning boards ask to waive things more and more, because towns can only update their zoning bylaws so often. So, you find this a lot, it's not uncommon, and it's nothing to be alarmed about. You know, that's why you see a lot of big box retails that, stores that don't use half their parking. And they end up with huge parking, a lot of impervious surface for nothing. So, as a planner, I'm actually glad to see parking regulations get reduced and get waived in a lot of instances, because I feel like a lot of businesses are overparked, to be honest, and I'd rather see more green space maintained, so.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Just, have the neighbors seen these proposed plans, so you know whether, I suggest you take a look, they are in file at the town hall. The cottages on the back of the property, they look like nice houses. But what's woods right now will be, will be some buildings out there. So, I wanna make sure the abutters know what's being proposed out there. So, please take a look at either the plans here, once we conclude the meeting tonight, or, and we're not gonna, there'll be a subsequent meeting. But also, just so everybody knows what's being proposed, I don't want people to come back a year later saying, oh, how'd this happen?
Mr. Chair, I just made real quick, because I know that's a, will be definitely a point of conversation, if not with the next meeting with the board, or at least with the planning board. With the cottages, we know they're up against the residential community. Right now, there's a very well-established wooded area as well as a very dense vegetated evergreen screen along the edge. What's being proposed is we are removing a portion of the evergreen screen. But what we're doing is we're replicating that with twenty-six eastern white pines to be located at the top of the slope that's gonna be here. So, in theory, we're starting off at a seven-foot height adjacent to the building. We're planting a seven-foot high tree at planting, and it has a grow rate of about one to two feet around the average here. If you have a heavy rainfall, moisture, you might need to get more than that. So, within probably an estimated six to eight years, you would have a vegetated screen that would be as tall in appearance as the peak of the building. So, I think what we've done is we've done the best we can with the understanding that there's gonna be some visual concerns. What we did, we took a look at extending the existing evergreen, blending it in, and providing something that's gonna have a solid visual appearance from both, both sides of the property.
Could I just say something? Hi, Anne Addaway, thirty-one Bullock Street. So, I am all for this, I just have a couple of questions. One, is anyone addressing the traffic that is now existing? At Bullock Street, I know it's a state highway, but it is, I live on Bullock. We have two cones on our street because of all the potholes.
There's actually, I'm sorry, there's actually a reconstruction of Route one eighth by the state that's currently under review by the town.
It's been, it's been a state ten years.
I know, it has been ten years.
So, it's supposed to be lights.
Are they, is there a proposal for putting traffic lights there on Bullock Street?
I'm not sure if there's that level of specifics.
Something has to be done there.
The town engineer would know more about that.
Do you remember the proposal for the lights there?
I do.
That was supposed to be part of a project, it was a condition.
It may still be.
And now that they've added the ending estates there in Patriot Tavern, it's just a nightmare to get in and out for our residents as well as for the
The town engineer, you definitely wanna contact her, because she's been much more involved with that, Maggie Walker, so give her a call with that type of specifics.
And my other question, or my other observation is, I love what you're doing with the trees back there. However, where my house is, the trees are all dying. They're all dying. So, I don't know if anyone has looked at that.
Just so we can clarify, where is your house?
It's, um
Yeah, it'll have the neighbors. Someone has a big pool, so
That's us. That's us. Well, actually, no, this is us. With a little pool, that's the genius. Yeah, with a little pool.
You're the little pool. So, you're, okay, yeah, so you're gonna be four to five hundred feet away from the development area.
Right, so I don't think any of this is gonna affect us. However, these trees that we had originally, and it was in eighty-nine, not eighty-six, that this was built, I was pregnant, so I know.
Sure, it took several years.
Yeah, but that's when they broke ground, it was eighty-nine. I almost didn't go to work, because I thought they were gonna cut down all my trees. But, yeah, those, I mean, is there anything that could be done?
Is it wet out back?
Not where, not where I am, no. Not on that one.
Could just be time, yeah.
It's just time, but so, so when the project was, when the project started, we were promised the trees, which are there. But trees die sometimes. What, you know, is there anything in place for fixing those? And this may not be the right forum and
Actually, I think, who's the manager of the site?
Right there.
If you had just talked to her, because sometimes, just, sometimes zoning board conditions are to make maintenance, care and maintenance of the vegetated buffer, the responsibility of the property owner. And I'm not saying that's in the decision back in the nineteen eighties, but why don't you just have a conversation with him separately? And see what you can come up with. That's not promising you anything, because
Worth an ask.
Happy to talk to everyone.
Okay.
We are.
But to continue with that, if you can go by the emergency gate, I know in the past, people have had to go after. This is a different ownership, I understand. It's a different operation. But people have had to go after them when things got kind of rough looking. And then, now, there's, I think there's a tree down in the, in the right, in the, where the gate is and stuff like that, which
You guys will notice.
It's to your benefit more than anything.
Right.
And I think part of the problem with, is the, the corner of Bullock Street is now the traffic with the restaurant and everything there, and
So, one of the things, and you heard earlier, the amount of traffic from this proposal that we're hearing tonight is not going to have a significant impact on the traffic on Main Street and the intersection. I get it, it's not a, it's, I don't like that intersection myself. But adding what they're proposing is not going to change the amount of traffic in that area.
It may increase the visitors.
What's that?
It may not increase the residence traffic, but the visitors coming in, it might increase.
Yeah, there's not that many more units though.
When you look at the volume of traffic on Main Street
That'd be very sporadic, that's not gonna be regular washout.
I'm just trying to get a traffic. I'm just trying to get traffic like, I love Ben Mart. I work for Ben Mart.
We should go talk to Maggie Walker.
Okay.
Yeah, because it has to meet certain warrants, as everyone knows.
State is doing.
Yeah, the state is.
Unless somebody else has specific questions about the site, what I'd like to do is continue this. When do you want to, what works, are you guys?
We're pretty flexible. Our planning board hearing is the twentieth of June, so.
Yeah, they're waiting for the election because there's a couple of board members not running.
We do have, the Concom is actually the twenty-fourth, like, half of this program. But nonetheless, we're flexible, is what we're saying.
So, I don't want to put them on the same list as the forty B.
Can I go out there?
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
So June?
And I apologize.
June nineteenth?
So, okay, June nineteenth?
June nineteenth?
Is that night before?
Does it matter? I mean, it.
No, I didn't know if it mattered to you, but I don't know how your time is.
Or would you want it?
No.
No, no, let's do June nineteenth. Okay.
That way, yeah, that way we'll have your questions, we'll have the planning board's questions. We can all take them to the plan.
Would you pick?
June nineteenth.
The conservation commission should be pretty well rounded with engineers.
Right, that sounds like a plan.
But I have a motion to continue until June nineteenth. Motion by Suzanne, second by Jane. All those in favor of continuing this until June nineteenth, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. You won't get another notice on that, so, you know, if you're interested, come back. And if your friends and neighbors are interested, let them know.
John?
Yes.
Should we look at that?
Look at it.
Take a walk, son?
I actually went out there myself, so I think.
Can you just wander out?
No, I just drove up there.
Oh, I know.
The part that I wanted to see was the back of the property and how it.
Up close to the pond.
The pond and stuff.
Yeah, the limit of work to the pond is two hundred and fifteen feet away from the limit of work.
All right.
Okay.
If any of you want to go out, I'm going to, I'll phone this guy out, but keep your call. You're pretty good wandering around.
I'm going to go scot-free tonight, Phil.
If you want an actual engineer to walk with you or who said something.
And.
No, not.
Move forward, please address the issues. I know the deputy fire chief had to answer questions.
We will have a tweet letter published by the time we're back.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have anybody here from Red Cherry, case number zero-two-nineteen? Okay. So, John, what happened with?
We've been in, I've been in contact with him, with the owner, two, three times. He stopped in. Been in contact with the engineer, told him exactly what was expected, what was needed on the plan. Engineer kept highlighting stuff, sent it back, says, is this what you want? Is this what you want? Finally, after two or three times, he said, I don't, I shouldn't be redesigning. It's very simple instructions, what you need to show. He said, well, I'm just trying to save my client money.
Okay.
So they didn't get, they were aware that they needed to get the materials in by Monday of this week and haven't heard anything.
I emailed Evelyn, the girl that presented. I emailed her this morning, and I got no response back.
Okay. Is there anybody here from Red Cherry, last chance?
Going once.
Okay. Unfortunately, if you don't show up for your hearing, the zoning board has the responsibility to end the hearing and vote to deny, so.
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, motion made by Suzanne, second by Jane, to close case number zero-two-dash-nineteen. Red Cherry at ten forty-nine Main Street. Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
Just proposed to deny without prejudice, should we file?
Yes. Okay, I agree with that.
Yep.
So motion's been made to close the hearing because the applicant is not here. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. So everybody voted five-zero-zero on that. Now, this is to deny without prejudice, case number zero-two-nineteen, which means they'll have to re-advertise and start over. But I have a motion to deny without prejudice.
So, second.
Moved by Suzanne, second by Jane. Any further discussion on that? Without prejudice allows them to come back with.
I was going to deny him outright. Lack of information.
Okay. All those in favor of denying without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Next one.
Last but not least. You're looking at me like, I want to go home.
Zero-one-dash-nineteen, ninety-eight, sum it up.
Rick gets to go home.
Good evening.
Rick, you can go home.
I can't.
You can run.
So we got a legal opinion from town council that says.
I saw it.
You saw it?
Yeah.
You cannot use that property, you cannot use the right-of-way for the, for the what?
Yeah, the case says, the case says you can't count it towards lot area and council, you know, extends that to, to apply to setbacks. So I've provided you with a revised block plan that shows the original nine thousand square foot parcel in our proposed house, which fits within all the setback requirements for that lot. So the proposed structure complies with all the setbacks for the original lot, which is seventy-five by a hundred and twenty feet. It meets the lot coverage requirements, and it is basically fully conforming.
Okay, do we have this?
So by that interpretation, the existing house is outside of the lot because it extends into the right-of-way. So we would be basically, the existing structure is not conforming due to the front yard setback and because it was extended outside of the lot to the right. So we would be remedying those non-conformities and eliminating them. We would eliminate all structure non-conformities.
So what do you need relief for?
So this will go back to process, which council hasn't weighed in on. And I provide you with two draft decisions. In two thousand and eleven, at that time, the board didn't link to make forty-eight section six determination. So they wanted to issue an approval under the bylaw somewhere. As Mr. Manick mentioned, forty-eight section six is not really in our bylaw. So they elected to issue a special permit under nine four A along with a determination that you could demolish it and not be considered abandoned. Council in two thousand and eleven advised that you don't need nine four A, that you can just make a determination under forty-eight section six, paragraph one, that the reconstruction of the structure is not more, doesn't increase the non-conformity. And if you make that determination, it's good. And then you make a determination under, I think it's section nine six G or whatever it is, that we can demolish the structure and it not be considered abandoned. So those two determinations, according to council's opinion in two thousand and eleven, gets the job done. In two thousand and eleven, they also wanted to issue a special permit under nine four A, even though council said.
So we had one of each in the same year?
It really doesn't apply. No, we, we did the same thing right down the street, Chuck's house.
At my house.
In two thousand and eleven.
We've done a couple of them, yeah.
So I would say if you want to follow council's original advice, the simpler decision that I've given you is two decisions, two determinations, no special permits.
At this point, sounds good.
First off, this all came in today. I want to make sure that it's done correctly because, you know.
Right, we don't want to come back to bite us.
Right.
Which everything does.
So right, so let's just, right now, you're not asking for, the only relief you're asking for is the ability to tear down the structure and not lose it as a house, a house lot.
Well, you need to do two things. You need to, you need to make the determination that tearing it down doesn't abandon the use.
Right.
That's one undisputed thing that you need to do. The second thing that you need to do is to grant permission to reconstruct on the pre-existing non-conforming law. So that can either be a determination under forty-eight section six, paragraph one, which is what council advised in two thousand and eleven, or what the board did in two thousand and eleven, despite council's advice, was to issue a special permit under nine four A, which is change, alteration, extension of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure, which this is. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure. So it comes down to the nuance of, you know, is this a change, extension, or alteration? Is that distinct from reconstruction? The bylaw doesn't, our bylaw doesn't speak to reconstruction. Forty-eight section six, paragraph one, does speak to reconstruction. And I think that's why council in two thousand and eleven advised that you only need to do the determination under the state zoning laws. You don't need to take any action under our bylaw specifically to allow the reconstruction.
The, in terms of, so if the lot's undersized, then the sort of, the size of the building, in terms of the square footage, is that changing with the reconstruction, with the new, the new building is going to be larger in square footage than the existing?
It's larger on the ground. I don't know what's, what's in the existing structure.
Oh, it's a, it's a dishing nightmare. And it does, I think, even have a little second, second area. But it was a ti, it was a small bungalow that was just added and added on.
Second floor area?
Added on. It's got a, it's got a screened-in area that was built off the side that's not into the livable space, connects to the garage. It's really just kind of.
But in terms of the livable area that the building has to be demolished?
It's probably smaller than, than.
Smaller than.
Yeah. I think our house, the new house is not as wide, but that's because it has to fit within the setbacks and the existing house does. But I think it's a little deeper.
It is, it is. The new house is half as wide as the existing house.
Yeah.
You can see on the block plan. The block plan shows the existing house. The existing house extends out of the lot by four feet.
So it's proposed as a single, one, one-story?
One-story block.
One-story, yep.
Yeah, it's one, one-floor building.
Do you have the elevations of?
Yeah, those were in the original package. The dimensions of the structure changed a tad on this latest block plan. But the application has a floor plan and an elevation.
So that's it?
Yeah.
It's got a little porch in the front, one car garage on the right.
So something on the second, is that a loft up there or?
Nope. Nope, that's just a vent showing on the front.
How many bedrooms?
Two.
It's two? This all came, this is, came in today, so I want, I want town council to take a look, I mean, not town, town council. I want an engineer to take a look at it. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? I think that where it was just submitted today.
We just, yeah, we just got council's opinion two days ago.
Right.
So it's just that May twenty-ninth, it's a long ways away.
Right, and May, it'll be the only thing on May fifteenth. Do you guys mind coming in for May fifteenth?
Is that the town meeting, are they?
Oh, I'm going to ask you.
Town meeting.
Oh, yeah, it's town meeting.
There's a town meeting.
But is that a placeholder for town meeting?
What's that?
Yeah, it's a placeholder.
Placehold for town meeting.
But is it, what?
Definitely that town meeting will be happening that night.
We had usually, from when, we'd usually met on, regardless of time we had.
We did that once though. We get some criticism for it.
Right, because I was town meeting. I always had to race back.
And, and remember the issue that, that, yup, that the apartment complex is up there in the center of town. Remember the man showed up one night and he said, well, I have other people who would come, but it's a town meeting. So we don't want to find ourselves, I don't have a problem with it, but I don't want to find us in that situation.
Yeah, time to race back and forth.
So let's, let's go for the twenty-ninth. And at that point, should be all, you know, as long as everything's clear on this, we're good to go on the twenty-ninth.
Is there any way to vote on it contingent upon legal?
No.
It's not legal, it's just maybe.
And, and we want to make sure, you know, we want to make sure it's done right because, you know, everybody should, should have a chance to make sure it's reviewed correctly.
So there are no outstanding issues on our side, correct?
No, I think, I think that it's, you know, pretty, pretty clear. The only relief you're looking for is, is the frontage and lot size. That's the only.
Well, no, we're not asking for variances.
You're not asking, right.
No, we're just asking basically for a determination that the reconstruction of the structure does not increase the non-conformity, right? It's a two-step process under forty-eight section six, paragraph one.
Right.
Are you increasing the non-conformity? If the answer is no, the answer stops, and it's okay. If you concluded that we are increasing non-conformity, then you move on to decide whether the increase is not, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, more substantially detrimental than the existing non-conformity. And if you conclude it's not, then it's also good. But if the first question, there's no increase in non-conformity by the reconstruction, you can, you can be done there and reach a conclusion.
Well, I don't think, I don't want to reach a conclusion tonight on that.
The other point you mentioned was.
Right, so it's two steps, two step then.
Okay. Do you want to continue this to the twenty-ninth? And it'll be, it'll be quick, if, if everything checks out.
I know the applicant just had her heart set on starting this project.
My life is on hold until this is approved, and so if there's anything I ought to do, I appreciate it.
What's that?
I'm lost.
Okay. Do you want to continue to the twenty-ninth?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Do you want to continue to the twenty-ninth?
Yes, please.
Okay. Continue to the twenty-ninth, moved by Suzanne, second by Jane. All those in favor of continuing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, we'll have this, people review this. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
The most.
Moved by Jane?
Yes.
Oh, hold on. No, no.
Oh, hold on.
Close the meeting.
The meeting.
The meeting. Do we have any minutes to approve?
No, let's do it next week.